If everyone to take their seats, please. Good morning. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners Committee meeting. Today is Monday, February the 9th, 2015. It's nine o'clock a.m. I would remind everyone who has a cellphone, please put it in a silent mood. Anyone wishing to speak today, I would ask that you fill out a speaker's form here at the front desk. We're going to start the meeting with prayer by Commissioner Bob Cold, pledged by Commissioner J.R. Williamson, so please stand.
Please join me. Gracious Heavenly Father, Lord, as we come before you this morning, Lord, we just ask that we each remain civil and realize that, Lord, we're just stewards over that that you've given us the stewardship of. Lord, we ask that you protect all our first responders and our military and all those that put their life on the line every day to protect our citizens. Lord, we just ask that you bless each thing that we do here today and provide us with the thoughts that are pleasing to you, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am God, and 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 I am God, and
Thank you, Commissioners. This time, we will approve the agenda for today. And we'll start with my, on my right, with Commissioner J.R. Williamson. Any add-ons or deletions?
No additional items today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, just a brief conversation about Sumpass. We do have this meeting scheduled for the 26th, and I'd like to talk to the board about that, so we put it, I guess, on Administrative Committee at the end.
We'll make that number 15 on the Administrative Committee. Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. One addition, a request for an addition from Kevin Rutzke of Juana's. It's a request for a special event. And to add that to Administrative Committee.
We'll make that number 16 on the Administrative Committee.
Then we have two changes. They're on the same matter. One is in the Administrative Committee, item number five. The original amount, this is related to the Navar, the N.Y.S.A. playground request. The original amount, you can see there, was around 126, 124, somewhere in that neighborhood. The new amount, and this should be reflected in your backup, is 238,923.33. So $238,923.33. And that will also result in a second change in the Budget and Finance Committee, item number eight, to reflect those same changes. Basically, instead of doing it in one phase, it's a request to do both phases because there was some mobilization cost savings. So that's why the change in the new total. 238,923.33. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
What was that amount again? 238? I know, but was it 973? 23? I'm showing 73.
If 73 is what you have in the backup, then that would be the accurate number. I probably wrote it down wrong.
Okay. All right. Also, we might include on that number five, that will come from District Four rec funds?
That's correct.
So noted, and here again, that'd be...
So the first one, would you like to make that number 16, Mr. Chairman, an admin?
Yes. And we just leave the other ones as corrected?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lentridge?
No items for today, Mr. Chairman, but I think we all received an email about possibly some marketing or signage from the Economic Development Budget to coincide with the tough mutter event coming up. So I haven't had a chance to get with Shannon. I'm going to talk with Shannon about that, and we may have something on Thursday's agenda for that.
Okay. Mr. Walker? Mr. Attorney?
Nothing further.
Mr. Engineer?
No items.
Ms. Budget?
No items.
Okay. With the two additions and the two changes, we will now approve the agenda as modified. It is now approved. Also, a reminder, our meeting on Thursday, February the 12th, will be held at the Tiger Point Community Center. Commissioner Lentridge, you're bringing breakfast?
And the rezoning meeting on the 12th is going to be down at the community center as well, at six o'clock Thursday night.
Okay. Very good. We will now get into the committee assignments. First one is Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Lentridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items. Item number one is discussion of extension of the Marketing Services Agreement with Davis, South, Barnett, and Patrick for tourism marketing through September 30th, 2015. There's a backup in the material along with a copy of the agreement. Any discussion on this? Shannon, do you have anything you want to say about this particular item?
I'd just like to add that I believe Davis, South, and Barnett, Patrick has done a good job with the county over the past few months, and this is to allow us to get on the same fiscal calendar as the county through September, so, and get us through the summer months, the busy period for us.
Okay. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of amended lease with Navar Beach Area Chamber of Commerce for office space in the Visitors Information Center. Again, there's backup in the agenda book. Any questions about this? If not, I'll move it to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And that concludes Economic Development.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on now to the Administrative Committee. First item is discussion of Navar Beach lease fee policy developed by the county attorney, Mr. Attorney or Mr. Walker, whichever one you choose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a memorandum in the backup for the Commissioners. At the planning meeting, the board directed that staff look at the existing leases on Navar Beach and come up with a, an understanding as to what the most common lease would be, the one that was in place for the majority or for the largest number of residents or leaseholders, and looked particularly at $250 per year. We determined that there are 550 leases with a fee of exactly $250 annually. Another 40 have a fee that is within $5 of that, and less than that. There are 336 with a rate less than $250 a year, and there are six leases with a rate of $100 or less. The modification contemplated by the board cannot increase lease fees. The indication from the board, again, was that there would be a calculation as to what the effect of a modification of the lease would be. The result of that is that if the leases are limited to $250 per year, there'd be total lease revenue of $419,250, which would be 1,677 leases, which would either be the existing $250 or more than that. 336 leases, which are not subject to modification, would generate an additional lease revenue of $66,301.38. The actual 2014 revenues are $494,612.34. The projected revenue with a $250 cap would be $485,551.38. That would be a reduction of $9,066.96 in lease revenue, which would make it essentially revenue neutral for the county. If there was a $100 limitation, my calculation would be that the lease revenues would be $200,700. $100 was one figure that was discussed. We also analyzed the effect of the 5% additional lease fees, which are charged to those leases that have that language and which are leased to third parties. Of the 706 leases which provide for the additional 5% revenue, only 74 are actually paying any revenue to the county, and those 74 leases generate $227,728.5 of revenue. The process would be that if the board so directed, upon the request of a leaseholder, the leases could be amended and restated with the same terms and conditions, but with the reduced amount of lease fees, or the same amount if it's 250. And the other issue that was addressed or requested by the county is whether or not the funds generated from these leases could be allocated to Navar Beach issues only, and that certainly is within the ability of the county to allocate those funds if the commission so directed. And I'll be happy to address any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. That's very good analysis, good work. We appreciate everything you've done on that. Any comment from the attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and I want to thank you and the Commissioners and Mr. Andrews and his office for all the work you've done and the analysis. As you know, we've said before, we're happy with a 250, and we, from everything, all the feedback I'm hearing, I think that's what the commission is happy with. And with that, I'm going to take the advice of an old lawyer who told me early on in my legal career, when the court rules for you, sit down and shut up.
Give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
So we know how to find you.
I'm sorry. John Connell, John Connell Becker &amp; Pollyakov, Port Walton, and I'm here for the Summer Wind condominiums.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this before the board has discussion?
I'd just like to go over into this thing, but I don't know why. The discussion is about how much money this is going to bring to the county on these lease fees. We are paying ad valorem taxes as everybody else is in the county. That's what should be coming to the county, what you should be concerned with. What you should be concerned with, I think, is what's fair and equitable to charge, if you have to have a charge, it should be a nominal amount. $250, it might be fine with Summer Winds, but it's not fine with the remainder citizens on Navar Beach. We should not have to be paying 250. You say, "Well, that's not that much." It's not, but it's just not fair. And that should be what this body should be considering, what's fair for the citizens. That's what is the purpose of this discussion. So $250 is not a lot of money, I grant you, but it's a lot of money if you're already paying ad valorem taxes, and we are, just like the other citizens of Santa Rosa County. So I think you'd find that 90% of the citizens on Navar Beach would object to $250 a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, ma'am.
I'm May Bruce, 8989 Wells Avenue, Navar. My only concern, I'm not addressing the leaseholders' concern right now, but is the commercial leases on the beach. I think that if you provided something for commercial leases, we have one big restaurant there that's just hanging on by its shoestrings because they have lease fees, they have to pay a percentage of their lease, as well as all the other costs. And if we want any commercial development at the beach at all, that area needs to be addressed, as well as the leaseholders that are not commercial. And I'd appreciate if you just, I think there's maybe two commercial properties at the beach right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Andrea McDermott, 8093 Sleepy Bay Boulevard. I appreciate you getting us to this point today. I know that I personally have been coming before the commission since 2009 in hopes of getting something like this done. The 250, you know, seems fair. You know, we all don't like what the Supreme Court said, but we have to respect it, and so the owners that I work with, they understand that you have to have some kind of lease fee. We would prefer it was less than 250. But also, in the planning meeting, you had discussed that the money that's raised from this would go directly to Navar Beach and not into the general fund. I believe the backup documentation that I read, provided by Mr. Andrews, stated that it would go into the general fund, and so I was just wondering where your position is on that.
I think he was just talking about if it went into the general fund, but here again, the last comment was from him, any revenue generated by the lease fees could be allocated as the commissioner directs, so that's what we're trying to get to. Anyone else? Okay? I'll open it up to board discussion. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take a look at the revenue that's generated by the commercial leases, beyond, or just not the revenue, I guess, the revenue is based on a 5%, but the amount of their lease fee. Do we have that handy, or?
We were not, weren't asked to look at the commercial revenue at this time. The information is...
I may, I think, raise a good question.
Well...
Maybe we need to take a look at that, but...
The, the commercial lease revenue generated in 2014 was $279,439.94. $11,000 from Holly Corp., $156,567.64 from Juana's. $7,848 from Navar Beach Ski. $36,913.48 from Rocco's. $5,341.2 from Sandy Bottoms. $17,216.18 from TC's Coastal. $898.61 from The Fund Store. And $43,258.68 from Tom Thumb. The lease fees vary from 5% for Juana's Sailor's Grill to 3% for Rocco's, 2% Tom Thumb, 3.1% for TC's Coastal, 3% for The Fund Store, and a mixed 5% of the first $25,000 from Holly Corp., 3% over that with an $11,000 per year minimum. The minimums on those other ones range from $100 to $250 a month. They don't charge any minimums more than $250 a month, except for the Holly Corp. lease.
Okay. Thank you. And the other question I had is, you have a statement here, 74 of the 706 leases report such income.
Those are the residential leases that have provisions, 706 of those leases have provisions that say that if they're rented to a third party, a condominium that's rented weekly or so in the season or annually, that 5% of that rent from a third party is paid to the county. There are, as indicated, 706 of those leases. There are only 74 of those leases are actually remitting any payments to the county, which means either the other folks are not renting them or they're not telling us about it.
And just so folks know, I think I've stated it last meeting, at the planning meeting, and I'll state it again today, I'm 100% for seeing this go to zero, but I don't want to do something now that would just trip a mechanism where the state comes back to us and says, "You can't do that." And that's why I think, you know, I can only speak for myself, but I think where that board's trying to get to today, so we can find a spot where we can apply the lease fee until we can get the fee simple title moved through. And I have talked to our lobbyists up in Washington and have a meeting scheduled with Senator Rubio's staff. I'll be up there in a couple weeks, and to reinforce the feelings that we have about the importance of getting fee simple title, make sure they stay on, the senator keeps that in forefront for us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Don, you wish to address this?
Thank you very much, Don Richards, 1129 Park Lane. I am here as the past president of United Peninsula, but I'm still here to represent a lot of the citizens. We've received hundreds of emails from people that either lease property, that have businesses. In fact, I was down there this past weekend, and people would pull me aside and say, "I know this isn't the time to be talking to you about business, but I need to talk to you about my taxes." And just listening today, at the convoluted tax structure that we have for Navar Beach, it's none of you guys that put it in place, so this is not a knock to anybody that's sitting in these chairs today. But I think now, with some of the influx of money that we've got getting ready to come into this county, to do some of the things that the taxes were set up to do, especially on Navar Beach, which is our diamond that brings in an awful lot of tourist dollars into this county and tax dollars into this county, that now might be a great time to have a public forum with all of you there and some of the staff in Navar, listen to the feedback, and now would be a great time to look at the tax structure that we do for the leaseholders there, to make sure it's fair and equitable to everybody. And I just really am asking you on their behalf to think about setting something up like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. And the taxes, they're basically, they are what they are. What we're trying to get to now is the fairness of the leases. So any other comments by the board? Mr. Rob Williamson?
I agree that it's important that we have a policy that can withstand a legal challenge. I think Commissioner Cole touched on that, and that is important, because it doesn't do us any good to drop it to $1 or $10 if it can't meet that legal challenge. And we need to have a clear policy, because as Don said, it is our diamond in the rough. There is an unbelievable opportunity to grow ad valorem tax revenue because of the property that we have at Navar Beach. I have a question for our Clerk of Court, Don Spencer. Can you give me an idea, Don, and it may not be able to give me the answer today, but an idea of what it costs us, what it costs Santa Rosa County to administer the lease? You know, there's a cost to us in labor, there's a cost in mailing out these, you know, the interaction annually, so if we were to drop this to $10 or to $1, as much as I would like to do that, there is a cost that is incurred annually. Can you, do you have any idea what that might be? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot with that this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say, we can go back and get that number. We looked at, the staff looked at that a number of years ago, and I want to say that there's either, I believe there are two FTEs that we fund, if I'm mistaken, in the Clerk's budget, but we can get that for the Navar, for all the fees that they collect with, I want to say with the Navar Beach Airport, the number of other things, but I think that we can quantify that at some level. It's been, we've at least had to run that in the past.
Mr. Walker's correct on that. We have some positions that are funded by the county to administer this, and we'll get those records to you, that information to you. Mr. Williamson?
Thank you. And the reason I bring that up is, even though I've been assigned District Four to represent, we're elected at large, and the decisions we make have to be in the best interest of all of Santa Rosa County residents. So even though I'd, it'd be great to be able to bring it to a dollar or zero, I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing it to such an amount that would end up costing Santa Rosa County money. So just once again, trying to, before we actually finalize any type of lease fee, I feel it's important to get all the information. So I feel that's at least what I'm trying to do right now, make sure that we get all the information to where we can make an informed decision. And Roy, I think it was excellent work putting that together. That would be the additional request I'd have, Mr. Chairman, is that we would ask staff to come back with what the cost is, or a ballpark cost of what it is for us to administer the lease fees annually. Thank you.
And that's why we have meetings on Monday. That'll give us three days to see if we can't come up with that number. I think the real question today is, is are we ready to move forward with a vote on Thursday to modify those leases on Navar Beach at a consistent amount? Mr. J.R. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did we say March 1st or March 31st, as far as we were suspending the payment?
It was through March, March 31st.
Through March 31st. Personally, and I mentioned this at the workshop, and I'll mention it again, I think that money that is raised, it needs to stay on the beach. That's my personal opinion, and I would be for that. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but if we're raising money from lease fees, it needs to stay on the beach where it's coming from. And then just kind of an update on fee simple title. Rubio's bill is currently in drafting, so that should come out hopefully in the next two weeks, is what we would hope for, and it will be a clean bill. It should be the clean bill that Miller is going to introduce in the House and that he introduced before, not the marked-up bill that we talked about, not to get anybody's hopes up, because we all know how Congress acts or doesn't act sometime. But, I mean, this could really be our shot to us as Commissioners. We need to make sure that we make the phone calls and get with the community. that we make the phone calls and get with the community and get with the local public to be making the phone calls to the offices. Once that bill comes out of the drafting stage, I'm sure they'll reach out to Senator Nelson to see where he stands on it. From last year's experience, he may not like the clean bill, but that's kind of the latest and greatest on the Fee Simple Title, but it should be something that we should hopefully be hearing about in the next week or two from everything that I discussed yesterday with the lobbyist. But going back to what we're talking about today, that money, I think that if we're going to have money for lease fees from Navar Beach, it needs to stay on Navar Beach. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I agree. I think our county attorney did a great job putting the memorandum together. I support moving forward with standardizing the lease rate at two hundred and fifty dollars. I think it brings a lot of clarity to the issues we have out on the beach. So that's step one. And then I would also like to look at a policy that would keep that revenue out on the beach in one form or another, and that's not something that we have to decide this week. So it's something we can take a look at between now and, it doesn't have to be March thirty-first either, because we're in the middle of a budget year, so this, that would really affect us starting next year, I would think, where we, what we do with the funds. But, you know, to put this to bed, I would like to go ahead and move forward with standardizing the lease rate at two hundred and fifty dollars for residential properties.
Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
And one other thing to look at, Mr. Attorney, we're going to make that retroactive to last year?
If the Commission directs.
We can, we have the authority to do that?
We do that.
Okay. So it would be retroactive to include last year's lease fee payment?
Keep that thought, and we'll come back to you in just a second. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have to say a whole lot other than learned early on how to count to three, so I'll give you your third vote there, so.
All right. And I don't want to overlook what our may say, but let's get, let's try to get through the residential fees first, and then we'll direct staff to continue to look at the commercial fees, and like Commissioner Lynchard said, there'll be a day we'll probably decide to leave that money on the beach, but today we're trying to get to the fairness of the lease fee itself. Yes, sir. One last comment, and then Commissioner Lynchard's going to move us forward.
Yes, sir. Tim Cohane, one four six six Homeport Drive, Navar Beach, Florida. I appreciate everything you gentlemen are doing. I, and I, Commissioner Williamson, Jerry Williamson, I really appreciate you publicly stating that you think the funds should remain on the beach. I don't like what I'm hearing when you say it will probably stay on the beach, because you are willing to come up with a figure or a number for the lease fee. I don't think that probably staying on the beach is appropriate. Thank you.
And here again, it's just something that we're not going to move forward for a Thursday vote, so I can't say it will or it won't. That's why I said probably.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rob Williamson.
I'm more than comfortable to go on the record as saying that I believe the lease fee revenue should stay on the beach. It practically qualifies as a special district now, paper-on-fire, we have utility, so absolutely, I would go along with my fellow commissioner sharing the same last name.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
On Thursday, I still can count to three, so I'm fine with that, too.
Mr. Andrews, is, can we do that between now and Thursday? Make a decision, or by Thursday, make a decision that the fee stays on the beach as well?
Well, the Commission can direct that that takes place, and going forward in the budget, it would have to be allocated in the budget process.
I just want to make, we can, make sure we can legally do that between, on Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Lynchard, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. It's just, it's not going to affect this year's budget. It will affect FY twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
That's correct. State your motion to move to Thursday again, please.
Let us come back with you. In other words, you want, as I understand it, you want to standardize the lease fees at two hundred and fifty dollars effective ten one fourteen, which would be our, the current budget year, and the policy directive regarding use of lease fees on Navar Beach.
There you go. Thank you, Commissioner Lynchard.
Did I miss something?
Just, I will, I'll just go ahead and put it out there that I'm not comfortable with two fifty, but, you know, I can also count to three, and it doesn't look like right now that that would be the will of the board and that the votes wouldn't be there. But if it costs us a hundred and twenty-five dollars to administer the lease fee on an annual basis, then going to two fifty, to me, I don't, I don't understand why we would go with the higher amount. So I'll be interested to hear what the cost numbers are. I mean, I seriously doubt it, but it might cost us more than two hundred and fifty dollars for us to administer the lease on an annual basis. I can't imagine that it would be a half a million dollars to administer the lease, but bottom line, I'd like to know before we finalize the decision. I guess right now, we're just looking to take this to Thursday, and we would finalize the motion at that time.
I'm ready to make a decision, and I know these people are tired of coming back and forth, and we just need to make a decision and move forward. Yes, sir.
Mike Burton, Finance Director. If we do the time print, it needs to be from November first, twenty fourteen. That's the way the lease fees run, so that'll help. I don't have exact dollar figures for you. There's one FT employee that has worked primarily on the lease, and I also have one that actually helps, but it's not allotted for in the budget. I looked at it as far as if it was a dollar, and then we would be in the red, definitely, as far as that goes, but I can have you exact numbers by Thursday on that, so.
Okay. So here again, we're going to move this to Thursday's agenda with one more speaker. Bill. Well, somebody behind you, Bill.
Brent Moore, seventy-seven twenty-one Gulf Boulevard, Navar Beach. Just a point of clarification, there are people that pay less than two hundred and fifty, leaseholders, and I just want to clarify, you're not talking about raising those to two hundred and fifty, you're just talking about a cap.
We don't have the ability to raise those unless you voluntarily agree to that.
I agree. I agree. So those who have those ten-dollar ones, congratulations, Bill. One last time.
I'll make this short. I know you're getting tired of hearing this, but I would proponent for one or ten dollars, but I really agree with Commissioner Rob Williamson when he says, "A good way to come up with a reason for charging a certain amount," whether they say two fifty or whatever, what does it charge? What does it cost the county to administer fees? A hundred dollars? That's, that's fine. Hundred twenty-five? That's fine. There's a reason then for doing this, because I don't understand how you came up with two hundred and fifty. I can understand why you'd come up, you'd want us to pay whatever it costs the county to administer the lease fees, and I think that's a very good suggestion. Thank you.
And I'd also like to remind everybody, we've had these conversations, too, and we had it during the workshop, at some point in time, we're going to have to look at the additional cost to maintain the beach and the bridge and a lot of those things, so we're going to, we're going to have to find other sources of revenue to maintain that beach as we move forward, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
Just real quick, two fifties, kind of from what I'm hearing, is what we're looking at Thursday, but if the figures come back between now and Thursday for Thursday's meeting, and we get a motion to make that lower, then, you know, I think you've seen enough will of the board to do something. My only problem is with it is I just don't want to trip a mechanism that gets the state back involved that says we can't, and then we got to turn around and have these meetings again to find a fine point, so I'm certainly willing to listen to what kind of figures we come up with on Thursday. But just so you know, I think, you know, two fifty is going to be the cap. If we can take it lower than that, I'm already on record to say I'd like to see it be zero if possible, so I'm willing to move anywhere in between those, the number zero and two fifty, so.
What I would encourage each commissioner to do to get with the county administrator, county attorney between now and Thursday, see if we can't come up with that number, make sure what we're doing is legal, and here again, we don't want to get the state involved as we try to come up with fairness. Okay. We're going to move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Here, none, it passes. Here again, my goal is to reach some decision at some point in time in the name of fairness, and kind of like the courthouse, but anyway. So that's moved. Next item on the agenda, discussion of Navar Beach Renourishment Project Funding Options for Local Share. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is a memo that I developed at the Planning Board, uh, Planning Board, at the Planning Workshop, the Board had directed us to come back with a proposed plan for renourishment of the beach. I outlined what, at least, or just, and remember that these are all estimates that have been provided by Coastal Tech, and so there's nothing in stone about these other than, because we don't know what the project's going to cost once it's bid and when the decision's made on the state portion or some portion of the state's portion or whatever it's going to be. But you see the four sources of income that we currently, currently have are projected income. We've got the FEMA, we've got the State of Florida DEP Beach and Coastal Systems Program Grant for, application for eight million and some change, and then the local share, which is fifty percent of that, which would be, or matches it at eight million and forty-five thousand, six oh six. And then we estimate that the penny set aside by the Board about a year and a half ago with the tourist development tax, we'll have, by the time we start the project, should have accrued about fifty, five hundred thousand dollars. I note that it would be, this project, we're going to make a recommendation that it be submitted for a, this first round of the restore funding for about a million dollars, and just to see how it scores, well, as I noted, it should do fairly well both economic development and environment. I did outline what the costs were in two thousand and four. That's changed some because of the state park is now the county park, and we're responsible for it, so either we, we renourish that portion of it, which would be a quote county cost, a recreational cost. The, an option always is not to nourish that portion of the beach if cost becomes a problem. That's just, again, an option. You directed Commissioner Williamson and I to look at the, what an equitable division of the local share was, and we, in our judgment, as I noted on there, is about fifty percent distribution between the leaseholders, which is for property protection, structure protection, and then the county portion, which is recreation. So anyway, that's, that's the division as it comes about. Of course, all these are based on estimates. Once you decide what the policy decision is based on, on what portion of the local share will be assessed, we will go back with Coastal Tech and the Budget Department to determine that there were three areas, I believe, set up in two thousand and six for the renourishment, and I put those, those maps in the, in the background for you to go to the specific parcel, so you now know what I know. That's, that's my report.
Mr. Rob Williamson, you have any comments, since you were part of that study?
Well, thanks, Mr. Chairman. There is one recommendation that I saw in here that Mr. Walker had put in, and we've heard it batted about before, where it relates to possibly restore fundings, funding being used for beach renourishment. I just want to comment briefly on that, that, you know, we had always said, and the Restore Council had said, that that money, it was important that we try to leverage it and that it make a generational impact. I don't feel that putting money toward beach renourishment would make a generational impact. I think if we wanted to make a generational impact, we would look at maybe forming an enterprise and purchasing the dredging equipment to where, you know, we would then be able to renourish our beach as well as service the other neighboring counties, and we could turn something that is a consistent, exorbitant expense, we could turn that into something that could not only be revenue neutral, but could probably be a tremendous profit center. That's something that I could see would make a generational impact. You would no longer have to worry about where these beach renourishment funds are going to come from. The neighboring counties across Northwest Florida, that's where the beach renourishment funding would come from. So as it relates to restore, I just felt it was important to throw that out there, and that's something that you can continue to talk about. As far as the fifty-fifty split, there are several reasons why we galvanized around that amount, but, you know, you've got the seventy-million-dollar approximate impact, economic impact that tourism, Navar Beach-specific tourism has. We've experienced unbelievable growth out there. Navar residents and South Santa Rosa County residents have told us over and over again that that natural resource is one of the things that's most important to them, and protecting that beach is vitally important, as well as the fact that the county now has more beach because of the last renourishment. Conditions changed a little bit, so we own more. It's probably our responsibility to take care of more, but somewhere in there between the twenty-five percent last time and the fifty percent, I think is the answer, but that was the recommendation we put forward, that anything that is left over after the tourist development fund has been exhausted, the state and federal share has been allocated, that that would be split between the county and an MSBU for the leaseholders. That's all I have.
And we all just better hope that the state comes through.
They will.
That's on record, is saying they will. Yes, ma'am.
Andrea McDermott, eight zero nine three, Sleepy Bay. I appreciate you thinking outside of the box, trying to come up with a better solution, because keep putting sand on the beach just is an ongoing problem and an expense. While you're calculating your figures for buying the equipment, though, you should include longshoreman's insurance. I know that when we bid jobs for having dock repairs and such, the people who are, who have the longshoreman's insurance, which is required, actually, their bids are twice as high, so if you had a team and employees that were here year-round on your budget, you would have to make sure you had the longshoreman's for year-round, and it may increase the expense more than just the equipment, the employees.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Before this goes too far down the road with BP funding, I, you know, and I appreciate Commissioner Williamson, Rob Williamson, looking at this, but I just, I don't think, it'd be a long road to hoe for me to support buying that kind of equipment and maintaining that kind of equipment. I really feel like we, you know, I'd like to see us get on board with moving this to more of a state issue, getting our state legislative delegation to start taking a harder look at it. You know, I just got to go back to the old adage, the two happiest days in a boater's life is the day he buys a boat and the day he gets rid of the boat, and this would be a heck of a big boat sitting out there, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll address the equipment thing as we move down the road. I was just sitting here thinking that Commissioner Rob Williamson, I guess he would do the operation in his spare time. Any other comments? Mr. Walker, what, what action do we need to take on this?
Again, you're not going to know what the, I mean, we still kind of are waiting on the state. I don't know that, if, that we're ready for any particular action on, on Thursday. I mean, I'm, I'm open to whatever you want to start moving towards.
Okay, so here again, it's just information today, and Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker, would the action be to get our consultant to come up with the MSBU figures?
And we can do that.
In preparation of the next step, so that we have that information at different levels of, of split, what the MSBU impact would be.
Okay, so the action on Thursday then would be for our consultant to start to prepare that MSBU amount?
An option. I assume you mean option, different options.
We will move that to Thursday's agenda without objection. Here, none, it passes. We will move that to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing how it passes. Act on the agenda, discussion of plan for replacement of the courthouse. Another project we need to hurry up and put to bed one day, right, Ed Fortune? Ed can't hear me. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, just as in, 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 in your packet is my, is the memo, and coming out of the, the planning workshop is, uh, you had asked that to us come back to you with a plan kinda focused on the two thousand and sixteen election cycle and to give you those dates. I will know in, in, in Ms. Valane's here, the, the March one and the primary election, they may move, they could move, I mean, that's, those are primary dates, those are set by the parties, but, but quite frankly, I mean, they, more than likely they won't, but they could, and that, and it's caveated on her website. Obviously, the, the November general late, November eighth general election, uh, is set, so that just shows the, the election cycle. Uh, obviously, we've discussed, uh, uh, the courthouse sites, those type things. First off is to determine a site, uh, and then, and then if it is, the, a, a number of the, the comments at the planning workshop was, was the downtown Milton site. If we are gonna do the Milton site, then we need to start identifying the par, the parcels and, and probably working with the city of Milton, uh, on, on securing those either through some kind of purchase option or, or contingency purchase, uh, or something to start through the process. And then if you wanted to engage, uh, HOK Incorporated, who is our, uh, consultant, uh, architect, architect on the, uh, this particular project, uh, I don't know if you wanna try to reduce the, the, the size of the, the building, uh, working with the, um, courts administration and the judges and, and, and Mr. Spencer and the users on, take the PD and the state's attorney out, just looking at options for what you could do. I mean, I don't, just try to reduce the cost as best you can. And then we do have the state appropriation that Commissioner, uh, J. O. Williamson wanna speak to, uh, regarding the, uh, some state assistance and that. But anyway, that's, that's the.
Commissioner J. O. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the county administrator put me on the spot, um, actually had spoken with Representative Matt Gates yesterday, and I believe all of you received the email from the minister last week that he is looking to put forth and try to get eight million dollars for the project, which would help, um, driving the cost down a little bit, and, and I think we really need to seriously look at this cost of fifty million dollars. If you look at Livingston Parish over in Louisiana, they have a population of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, it's a little bit smaller than Santa Rosa County, um, they're gonna house their clerks, their sheriffs, their district's attorneys, district judges, and it's an a hundred and nine thousand square foot building that was built for twenty million dollars, it just got finished last year. That's more than half of what we're, um, gonna spend on our courthouse, and I think ours was like a hundred and sixty thousand square foot, but this one's a hundred and nine square, um, thousand square foot, that, that's a hundred and eighty-seven dollars a square versus over three hundred dollars a square. So we really, um, over the next few months, need to look at, is, is our cost, is it really gonna be that high, or, or where can, why is it so high compared to, I mean, I know Louisiana's a different state, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it, it, I can't see it being a hundred and eighty-seven a square in Louisiana and it being over three hundred square in, in Florida, that's just my personal opinion. Um, I'm, as I said in the workshop, would be an advocate for the downtown side, I don't think there is a perfect site in Santa Rosa County, and I don't think downtown is the perfect site, but looking at the last election and looking at two thousand and two, whenever we kinda added a couple things to the, um, to the ballot referendum, it was a seventy-five, twenty-five split, seventy-five against it, twenty-five for it. When you look at a few months ago, and you look down precinct by precinct, I mean, we were at fifty-fifty on a lot of these precincts, uh, some of them were not. I think overall, I don't know, do we end fifty-four percent, we're against it, and forty, uh, it was something like that, so, I mean, it was very close, it's closer than, than we've come, and I still am of the opinion that the same thing that I said six or seven months ago, is that we should've chosen the site beforehand, and I think if we would've chosen one site, we would probably not be having this discussion today, or we would've been razor-sharp close. That's why I'd like to put forth the downtown site, I think that it's the site that got the most of votes, um, so it's the site that probably has the most support right now, and try to just sell that site for the March first, uh, presidential preference primary, and give it a one-up, one-down vote, keep it simple, and I'm not gonna say the last word, 'cause my three-year-old might be, uh, watching, and I got on him this weekend about saying that word, but the keep-it-simple method is what we need to do, one-up, one-down, and if we don't, if it doesn't happen on March first, then maybe we gotta start thinking outside the box and figuring out what we're gonna do, but I still, will always go back to, we didn't try it just the simple, easy way, one site, vote it up, vote it down, and if it doesn't pass, then we're gonna have to regroup and really start thinking outside the box. But Matt Gates is excited about trying to go after, Representative Gates go after this funding, eight million dollars would be huge. If we could find out some way to cut the courthouse down to forty million dollars, if we could get the eight million from the state, then we're at thirty-two, and, and there's the likelihood of having a three-year tax instead of a five-year tax, and, and every little bit now that we can do is gonna, gonna help, but I would like to see staff work with the city of Milton on, if we decide as a board to go with the downtown site, we need to find out what the cost of those other parcels are. That way, if we're going into town halls, we're not saying, well, we don't know, we think, we think, let's, let's get things, we've got time over the next three, four, five months, get things in place, and then go out and have true answers about parking, true answers about the cost of these other properties, and I would support going with the downtown, uh, site, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments by other board members before we open it up? Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, I support going with the downtown site as well, for all the reasons that, uh, Commissioner Williamson said.
It's not a popularity contest.
So I would, I would like to move forward with that, and again, I, I think we do need to engage HOK, get them to take another look, focused in on the downtown site, because that was, given the way that things played out last year, and we focused on the P Ridge site with HOK first, they had a lot of time to evaluate that site, and then took that design essentially and moved it out to East Milton and took that same design and moved it to downtown and tried to shoehorn it in. So I would support re-engaging HOK to focus solely on the downtown area. Um, if they come up with a, a slightly different footprint, maybe we won't, we don't need to acquire five parcels, uh, downtown, uh, but this would give them the opportunity to focus on downtown, see what can go there, um, do we need a parking garage, maybe, you know, focus on the parking, let's get all those questions answered, and, and then see if, if they can sharpen their pencils on the estimate a bit and, um, bring the price down somewhat.
It would be interesting to know what the difference in that, in the two, two facilities would be, and, and Mr. Brode will know that, I mean, they, that's, that's the circle they travel in, so I'd, I'd be interested in kinda what the difference in that is, and...
Yeah, and, and I think obviously what Commissioner J. O. Williamson, Commissioner Lynch said, we need to re-engage HOK, get them to revisit that downtown site, see if it's doable or not, I know some people say it is, but just, just make sure it is before we move forward. You know, how big a facility do we need? Uh, before we go down any other road, I think those things need to be answered first. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the other thing needs to be answered is the question that Commissioner J. R. Williamson brought up, quite frankly, why is there such a difference in cost? I mean, they, they should be able to answer that first and foremost.
And, and looking back at the numbers, if you'll remember, the hard cost for the structure was something shy of forty million dollars, and then the, about, between eight and ten million was, uh, at furniture fixtures, equipment, security, technology, which is extremely expensive, that was about another ten million dollars. Within all of that was a ten to fifteen percent contingency, so the, the structure, you know, they, they spec it out at thirty-five million, thirty-six million, they add four, five million dollars contingency in there, that's how you, that's how the, the figure got so high. Um, I know they had a fifteen percent contingency in, uh, most of their figures during the first round of, of, of estimates, so, there's a lot of contingency in there, and then hard structure itself was, was something shy of forty million dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
I'll ask that, um, Commissioner Williamson be allowed to share that information, if he would, to rest of the board, you know, through the county attorney, it sounds like you did a lot of homework on this.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be glad to, to, to look into anything that we need to with HOK and with, with the county staff, and, and I did wanna add to, um, that, I had a question for Supervisor of Elections, if she doesn't mind coming up for just a second. Right now, we're looking at March first for the presidential preference primary, um, we know that can change because a lot of times states like to be the first one or the first big state to, uh, decide, um, who, uh, who's gonna be the presidential, uh, nominee. If Florida were to move it up, it was January in two thousand and twelve, do you need sixty days before that, pretty much, to have ballot language written, sixty days?
At least, because we are required to send out military ballots forty-five days, uh, ahead of time, so we would need at least sixty days.
So if the state during session comes out and, and, um, or, or whenever it happens, and, and Florida wants to be kinda the first, uh, the first state to, or, you know, really decide and put forth who they're gonna have, Iowa, I don't know when Iowa, um, caucus will be, but I would imagine January, if Florida wanted to jump in right after that and say mid-January, the fifteenth, um, which would probably be the absolute earliest, I think that they could have a presidential, um, preference, we would be looking the end of September that we would need to have the ballot language finished? Is that correct?
Yeah, we, like I said, we would need to get the military ballots out forty-five days ahead of time, so that, therefore, those ballots would have to be printed and be here, so.
I, I would just like for us as a board to be in the mindset that by September thirty-first, we're gonna have everything finalized, instead of, I think, the number, or the time we said before, we would need it by, um, December, is what you had said before, September thirty-first, I think we need to go ahead because we don't know what the state's gonna do, and they might move that up, so, um, that way, we're not thinking December, and then all of a sudden, the state decides something, and then we're scrambling around, let's go ahead and get in the mindset now that we're gonna have this thing finalized by September thirty-first, wherever it's gonna go, whatever type plan it's gonna be, and, uh, then have the ballot language ready by September thirty-first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tappy.
Any other comments by the board? Anyone in the public? Name and address, please.
Sixty forty-nine Arnie's Way, Jerry Coey. Thank you for, uh, recognizing the citizen's right to speak. Uh, to Commissioner J. R. Williamson, thank you for being steadfast on this, thank you for making your wishes known today. Commissioner Lynch, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, we have one other commissioner that, I don't know, he seems like he leaves every time I step up here, but I'm sure you can hear me, he campaigned at forty-seven different places that he was the only commissioner that had committed to downtown Milton, so far I haven't seen him do that. The reasons for my comments is we need to get past this, we need to be done with this Thursday. We, we need, we need to, we need to have three or more, I, actually, I'd like all five of you. Uh, you know, I, I've shared with all of you that I'm committed to this project, for the first time in my life, I'm gonna support a tax increase and have been trying to do that. We need to be unified, we need to be counted as five commissioners so we can move forward. As, as to the, um, the building itself, uh, uh, it, it, it continues to astound me, the numbers that get thrown around, how can something be well over three hundred dollars in one place, a square foot and a hundred? I, I know when the city of Milton did their community center, they built that beautiful facility, storm-prepared, metal roof, kitchen, nice carpeting, paneling and everything, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. At that time, we were talking about a courthouse in Santa Rosa County at four hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. So there's, there's obviously some, some issues here. My comments are about what I believe will pass. You don't always get everything you want, but this is what I believe will pass. Number one, downtown Milton location. Number two, a hundred thousand square foot's gonna be the max, when you, when you, when you look at the dollars, irregardless if the state wants to kick into this, um, when, when you get past forty million dollars, you're making people nervous, because everyone in this room and everybody watching this knows that there's gonna be anywhere from a ten to a forty percent cost overrun, and, and, and that, that shoots you, you know, that puts you out of the ballpark. The a hundred thousand square foot, I, I will tell you, and Hunter Walker talked about shoehorning a design in, I didn't, I didn't, I did not care for the design for the downtown Milton, it is my belief that the new courthouse needs to be snugged up behind the current courthouse. Some money used in the one-cent sales tax issue to properly redo the current courthouse so it's a usable building. Uh, my, my concern is that if you spread out this new courthouse all the way to the railroad track, you, you hurt, I think you hurt downtown Milton. I would rather have the courthouse, the, the addition, snugged up to the current courthouse, and then, um, uh, that leaves, that leaves a whole lot of room. From an engineering standpoint, we all know where the wet spot is down there, there's certain times the, that's where you put a beautiful aesthetic holding pond right there that winds up being the center of attention to downtown Milton, and then, and then you work your, your parking around it. But I, I would like for you to consider that, and, and in fairness to Commissioner Rob Williamson, what, what I said was, you seem to be very in favor of the downtown Milton location during the campaign. Today, we haven't heard anything out of you, this, this is not, not a personal or, not an assault in any way. At all of those meetings, you said you were the only one that was for downtown. I haven't seen you that strong in this, and I'd like to encourage you, we have two commissioners that have stepped, stepped up to the plate today and said absolutely downtown Milton. I'd like to encourage the other three, and, and I would like to hear from you, uh, Rob, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ed Fortune, your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Ed Fortune, four nine seven one Schmuckler Highway in Pace. Let me say, I appreciate the board, 'cause this has been a long, long journey, and it hasn't been, uh, at least supported by the, the majority of the citizens of Santa Rosa County. We need to find what it's going to take to, for the citizens to adopt the need and meet the need and fund that need for Santa Rosa County. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your statement that you made to the Pensacola News Journal, and, and I'm sure it was quoted, uh, correctly by the news journal, but I just wanna read it, 'cause it, it's what I believe in, and I believe this is the approach that we need to take in order for the citizens of the county to support it, because you look back at the last election, we only liked six thousand votes of passing for the sales tax, and I believe in two thousand and two, it was about o- over twenty thousand votes liking to pass it. So we're fast approaching the finish line, but we're not quite there, and we don't need to change, I think, from the last election, other than the changes that I would suggest to you that you made, but I believe the statement you made to the pa, to the press, the bottom line is where we got to have a new, that we've got to have a new courthouse, Mr. Salter said. So whatever makes sense, whatever works, what would gain the support of the people, that's what we've got to do, and I concur with that, and I believe, in my opinion, the, it's not going to, it will not pass by the citizen for fifty million dollars. Now, I've heard from lots of people, two issues, the major issues. Number one, what was projected, and I think misconceived, we were building to meet the need for seventy-five years. I can't comprehend, and they can't comprehend, what the need for Santa Rosa County would be in seventy-five years, we have need today, and that's what we ought to address. They also said we cannot afford to pay fifty million dollars for meeting the need for seventy-five years from now, and when I don't know what that need's going to be. So I think we, what I would like to see us do, that in the county, at your request, a board's request, voted for a particular site, and I think that decision has been made, so we should go on to ballot with only one issue, and that's the source of funding. And I concur with you, for the three terms, for the two terms that we voted, you, the board chose the best source... chose, the best source is sales tax, and I agree with that. The only other course we've got for funding the need would be property taxes. And I am not in favor of raising $50 million on property taxes to build a judicial center. I believe the sales tax is the right source of revenue. We need it, we want it, we got the funds if we've convinced the people that the correct way of funding is by a sales tax. Now, there's other needs, and as we're talking about needs, I believe today, there is a need in the south end of our county. We can reduce the cost here, in this county, in the city, and develop one at the Tiger Bay Point, or in the south end of our county for a court. That system can also, that we have the sheriff departments over there, the clerk of court is over there, so why can't we add another courtroom there, so that citizens of the county then could use that facility for family court, juvenile court, small claims court, that would take some of the pressure off of driving from south end of county to Milton. That should be part of our long-range plan, and not 75 years, but it's going to come future, or quicker than that length of time before you'd have to expand, I think, for the court system. But I believe working together, and what the city has done, now, I serve on that committee with the city of Milton for the courthouse in Milton, downtown Milton. And they offered to work with you, provide money to construct that facility, and it makes me very proud that we have in our area, the city government, the county government working together. It tells me, and it tells the public that they support that. And that's, I think, is how we can gain the support from the citizens of our county in 2016 to meet the need for the judiciary in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. And that quote is exactly on target.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Warren Mills, 5734 Janet Street, Milton. I think I'm going to echo a lot of what Mr. Fortune said. We were at Commissioner Williamson's meeting at the coffee shop, and there was a lot of discussion that seemed really valuable about doing a phased project, and the need to segment services, you know, to some extent. So as a primary location, City of Milton does seem to be a great idea. However, to put it all in one place, seems to perhaps ignore the concept of specialization that can be very valuable, and we might miss the fact that the south side is growing so dramatically, as is Pace, that to accurately meet the needs, we need to look for a long-term, if we're really looking at a long-term solution, it's not an all-in-one spot, all or nothing. And I think that may be, the all-or-nothing idea may be what people have problems with, with the magnitude of the cost, because it is quite a costly prospect. And the information he brought up was very valuable as to the square footage cost. Because that is staggering, because I can't imagine that the quality is that remarkably different. But I think if we look at doing some specialization, I think it's been brought up before, the possibility of having a criminal facility by the jail to serve needs in that regard, do a civil facility downtown, which would act as the formal courthouse of the county, and then look to expansion later in the south side, is trying to develop a solution for a need 75 years from now without having accurate information on growth of populations, and whether there will be the magnitude of growth that we've seen in recent years. So it seems unlikely that we're going to keep growing at the rate we have over the last 12, 15 years, unless something dramatically changes in the area around us. Because we're a bedroom community, the idea that we're going to have a huge population influx without some sort of growth in the jobs seen in the surrounding areas, I think it's a little unrealistic to expect 3.5% per year population growth. And finally, I do think what Jerry brought up was a good thing, because we did get a lot of placards at my house about your support for the downtown site. Have you changed your position? Or are you still for the downtown site? Because I think that was an expectation the voters had, and I do think the people, they do deserve a response on that. You know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think it's an important thing that we hear about, so. Thank you all.
Anyone else? We're going to move on, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to speak very candidly today about this topic, because it is an important topic. And I didn't know that I had to defend my position. I had a well-thought-out position. At the time that I said that I believed the courthouse should go in downtown Milton, it was not popular. And it wasn't popular for some folks throughout the campaign. But I didn't feel the need to vocalize a change of my position, because my position hasn't changed. It was a good decision then, it's a good decision now. The issues that I have with it are that when I originally evaluated selecting the downtown site of the three that were currently available, keep in mind, the Avalon site, which I believe was the cleanest parcel, was not an option. There was three options, and I thought the downtown Milton site was the best option, going off of the design that we had originally. And, Mr. Chairman, I've got to tell you, I did not think that within my first 90 days of taking the oath, I would say this, but I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Coe, that the courthouse should be placed where the original design was, directly behind the existing building. And the reason I bring that forward is that if we put the new courthouse behind the existing courthouse, there is no need to purchase property throughout downtown Milton. I was never in favor of purchasing property, especially some of the worst property there. There's probably a reason that property isn't developed now. It's probably not very marketable. So if we were able to put the courthouse where the portables are now, and I realize that that's going to, that's why I was encouraged to hear Commissioner Lynch talk about the fact that we're going to be laser-like focused now on that downtown site, and see, is it going to be feasible? Is it going to be cost feasible? I would love to see the courthouse, the new judicial center, placed directly behind the old facility, and that way, we would have no need to purchase property. As far as renovating the existing building, I heard a lot of folks tell me on the campaign, and I tend to agree with them. How many times is it that you end up seeing a municipality or a government entity, they build this nice new building because they tell everybody they need it, and then they turn around and renovate the old one? My thought is, if you could renovate the old one, then why aren't we using that? So either its usable life is gone, or it isn't. Which is it? If the usable life is gone, and if it's not safe for citizens or employees to be in that building, or it's not cost feasible to renovate it for our needs, then there is your room for future expansion. I talk very publicly about that as well. I've always felt that that's a 50,000-square-foot building. If we don't expand into south Santa Rosa County, as Commissioner Gerald Williamson has recommended that we will probably need to do, when and if the next expansion would occur because of population growth in the county, there's your area for expansion. You could put in an additional building, you could sell it, you could have mixed-use development, whatever. So that are my thoughts on the courthouse. I believe the downtown Milton site is the best site for Santa Rosa County, if we can put that where it was originally. When we move the courthouse back behind the portables that queues buying six or seven pieces of property, and that, to me, is a serious concern. And the last thing I would put on it is that I still feel that even if we galvanize around that site, we need to have some public comment, period. And I feel that that's important, to where if anybody has any earth-shattering ideas, they won't be able to get to the last minute and then start bringing ideas forward. I think we've probably heard most of the good ideas at this point, but let's make sure that folks are afforded that opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, so I think what we want to do for Thursday is to direct staff to reengage HOK, to evaluate the downtown site, and then come back and make recommendations to us, and have something for the referendum, or to put on a referendum by September 31st, 2015. Is that correct? Is that what we, I, we would move that without a...
Mr. Chairman. Question.
Mr. Cole.
As part of what we're going to assign HOK to do, will part of that be, just for clarification, will part of that be to isolate what the cost would be to occur, to put it directly behind the building? Because, you know, that's going to be quite substantial, and it'll be a long time before the sales tax would kick in. Those monies to move those facilities, house those people for X number of, probably years, I would say at least 18 months to two years, would have to come out of, you know, general fund, or, I'm not sure where that would come from, until that. And then there'd have to be a will of the board, are we going to, you know, use part of the sales tax money to replenish the general fund for those costs that would occur at that point? Just some questions that come up, because, you know, if we're going to do that to offset the purchase of property, is it going to cost us more to do that than buying the property? Neither one of those are any figures that, you know, I mean, it's going to go into millions of dollars either way. So I'd like to know that.
And I think every, all your questions need to be answered. I think there's a lot of questions that we're going to have to get answered before we can move forward. We're definitely saying, this is what it's going to be, this is how much it's going to cost, this is what it's going to look like. So that's why we want to reengage HOK to start providing us with that information. I've never built a courthouse in my life. I don't plan on building one by myself, that's why we have people like HOK. One last comment, we're going to move on. Yes, ma'am. Let me back up just a minute, directing staff to reengage HOK, to look at the feasibility of placing the courthouse downtown Milton, without objection for Thursday. Here, none that passes. Yes, ma'am.
Wallace Mahout, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. Because the downtown site is the most popular, chosen by the people, I think it is a great idea to put the new courthouse right behind the existing courthouse. And can HOK let us know if, instead of waiting to use the existing courthouse for something in the future, what would the cost of incorporating it into the new courthouse be, using it now with renovations? Would that be feasible or not?
Well, Wallace, if I heard what I think I heard, we would have to be able to continue to have court in the old courthouse while the new one's being built.
Right.
And then once the new one becomes functional, that's when we would back up and renovate the old one.
Okay, I just thought maybe the most important parts to move people into, in the new courthouse, could be achieved first, and maybe the existing courthouse could be worked into the maybe lesser important immediate need area.
That's going to be the function, obviously, of HOK, to kind of see how to accomplish any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Joe Williamson.
Ms. Wallace, I mean, and this is just, you know, thinking, you would imagine if we did do something with the renovation of the courthouse where we are now, that we would have the portables removed, the courthouse, the new portion built right behind it, people moved into that, and then the people that were removed from the portables, they would still be wherever, you know, wherever we can house them for two years or however long. The renovation of the old courthouse, and then those people would move into that area for like a clerical type only. And then that's just, you know, thinking out loud, that really, I mean, there's nothing concrete about this. We're going to get with HOK and find a real-world solution on how this will work, and real-world cost, on what it's going to cost to do this whole thing. That way, we're not waiting 30 minutes, or 30 days, or probably 30 minutes, before we vote on the final referendum, and still trying to answer questions. Let's get them all out in the open now, we've got plenty of time to do that. And I said September 31st, but there's only 30 days in September, so the joke's on you. But September 24th is our meeting, so let's say September 24th if we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I just thought, since that spot is probably going to be chosen, why not use something that's already there also? So, thank you.
I think this is the perfect time for us to be discussing this, and I'll get with HOK and do the best I can. I mean, I'm sure all the rest of the board will as well, but I've got a lot of questions too, about how we can get all these moving pieces together, but that's why we want to jump on this now. And it's not because we want to talk about a courthouse for the next nine months, because I really don't, but I want a courthouse. So we need to do what we can to get one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we're going to ask staff to reengage HOK, change the date to September 24th, and that's what I get from, we're listening to a young commissioner misleading me about how many days are in a month. So, without objection, here, none that passes. All right. End of discussion on the courthouse, it's 10:25. We're going to take a 10-minute break, reconvene at about 10:35. We'll reconvene the meeting at this time. Next on the agenda is number four, discussion of proposed resolution requiring electronic filing of local campaign finance reports as requested by the supervisor of elections. Mr. Walker, Ms. Tappy.
Mr. Chairman, in your package is just the memo to me, and it was distributed to you that had the, just a memo making that requirement. I believe that there, she notes that it requires a resolution requiring that local government finance reports be filed electronically. I think 49 out of 51 do, Tappy, did I read that memo right? So, I mean, it's, and she gives the state, again, is a copy of the legislation and then the specimen resolution. I believe that, she can, you may speak to it.
Tappy, any comments? Name and address.
I'm Tappy Valane, Supervisor of Elections. Good morning. And you know, Dawn, I have comments. Basically, it's, you know, we want to recommend that you guys pass a resolution for online filing. I know you are all familiar with filling out your campaign reports. Some of you guys just did it. Basically, right now, the process is you have two ways to do it. You can either do a hard copy where you actually just fill it out, sign it, and bring it into our office by the date that it is due. Or you can go online to the Division of Elections website, and you can actually fill it out online, and then you can print it off, sign it, and send it into the office. The problem with the Division of Elections website is you can't save your information. So if you go online and you fill everything out, you print it off, and then you realize there's a mistake, then you have to go back in and redo the whole thing again. So, what I'm proposing is that we just, at no additional cost to the county, there is a module that we can add to our current website that we have. And basically, a candidate political committee would be issued a PIN and a password, and they could go in and put in their contributions, their expenditures. It would automatically generate a summary report. And then when that report was completed before the due date, they could just press submit, and then it would be posted onto the website. Amendments can be done on this online filing site, so can waivers, anything such as that. Mr. Walker had said that out of the 51 counties that utilize VR systems, which is the vendor that we use to maintain our website, out of those 51 counties, 49 of those are actually using the online filing. Both of our neighboring counties actually utilize the online filing. And I don't know if you guys know, but if you are a state candidate, the only option you have is to do the online filing. And so I believe that that's going to be a goal of the state, is actually to come up with some type of a uniform filing system that will trickle down to local counties and Ethan cities in the future. So, anyway, that's kind of what it is in a nutshell, and I just appreciate y'all considering a resolution.
Tappy, would this eliminate the old hard copy system?
It would.
Okay. Any comments by the board? Commissioner J. O. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As an individual who's run for state office and had to file through this system, please, let's get into the 21st century because it's a whole lot better than what we're doing now as a county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Tappy.
Number five, discussion of purchase of ADA compliant playground equipment in the amount of $238,973.33 for Navarre Sports Complex from J. A. Dawson and Company Incorporated under Florida State Purchasing Authority Contract Number 110179. And these funds would come from District Four Rec Funds. Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Do you have a public comment?
Okay, go ahead. Come on. Name and address, please.
My name is Andrew Adams, and I'm at 2642 Barefoot Creek Circle in Navarre. I was notified of this playground by Sandy Kemp with the Navarre Press. She mentioned to me, after having discussions with her at a private meeting, that there was going to be this new playground put in. I am a certified playground safety inspector. I have been since 1996. Up until September of this year, I represented another company that would have been a competitor for J. A. Dawson. Therefore, I wouldn't have made a comment at that time. I am currently employed with Big Toys, which is another division of the same parent company that Game Time is. So therefore, I'm not trying to dissuade you from purchasing from Game Time in any way, shape, or form. I'm just making comments about the particular design and the process that it took to get to where we are. I think that $250,000, $238,000 is an awful lot of money to spend without having had any public comment whatsoever. There's not been a single meeting that the public has been invited to to give comment to this playground. My concerns with the playground are safety-wise. There is something in that plan that's called a zip line, and a zip line by any standard should be, oh, it's up there. A zip line by any standard of the imagination should be on a fully supervised playground that's not accessible to the general public without, without some, that's it. That right there, that whole black line across the bottom part of that, that, that's it right there. Now, children will get on the top, and they will go all the way at the top of the picture. They will go all the way down to the bottom, and there's nothing that they can do to stop. There are no brakes on that. They will continue on. If there's another child in the playground who is hearing impaired, or vision impaired, or motion impaired, they can't get out of the way. If there's a little child on that playground who happens to toddle in the way of somebody on that zip line, they will get mowed down. So, I don't think that Game Time has any promotion that this should be in a public playground. It should be at a school where there's supervisors, or at a camp where there's supervisors. The other issue I have is that second, that structure under the green roof, can we do the, the highlight that green roof structure there, right there? That structure is a non-standard Game Time structure. All standard Game Time structures, the top deck is only six feet tall. That blue slide, that curly slide, if you look at it, go ahead, and if you go back to the other version, other view, that blue curly side and the left-hand side, that is a tube slide, and it is very, very, very easy to climb the outside of that tube slide. Use your cursor to go up the top of that tube slide, right there. Okay, children falling from that place to the ground is over 12 feet. There are no surfaces that are approved for a head injury protection at 12 feet. None of the surfaces, even if they do provide head injury protection, are designed to prevent long bone or other injuries. So therefore, that is a particularly dangerous thing that main, that Game Time generally does not put in its playgrounds. That's only being done at a specific request of this specific design. The other thing I have as an issue with that design is that it does not include anything natural whatsoever. There are no natural objects, and the current thinking in playground design is to include as much nature as possible. That includes absolutely, absolutely zero nature. So therefore, I would volunteer to, to work with the committee to come up with a better design. I, I think that the Game Time representative would be perfectly happy to modify the design at this point. You know, the amount of money doesn't bother me. It's just, we need to have a playground that meets better, better ages. I also would request, Rob, Mr. Williamson, that you consider a frisbee, a frisbee disc golf course at that park because it addresses much more wide-ranging of ages. I can play it, you can play it, the kids can play it. Frisbee golf is a very popular sport. If you look at the Shoreline Park, it's being used all the time. The other thing I have, one more comment. I was, I've been to that park twice in the past week, and not a single time have I been able to go into that park without being on the driveway. There's not a pedestrian entrance at all. The entire, the fencing is all the way down Pawnee. It's locked up, cannot get there. People have to walk all the way around to the same place that the cars are going in and out. They can't get in that park by walking. So, if you're at the YMCA, you're doing a workout, you want to go to a playground, you have to get in your car and drive to the park that's right across the street, instead of walking across the street. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comment before I make mine? Let's see that, we have some members of the NYSA Board that are here. Hit the speak button there.
There, is that better? Darren Thomas, 7315 Brewster Street, Navarre. Also serves the Vice President of the Navarre U Sports Association. We actually have, this playground has actually been a part of our park improvement plan since we rolled that out last year. We were able to get about one project completed during that time, but meeting with Rob Williamson back in November, he asked us to, you know, provide that plan to him, to help us work through the desperately needed improvements to our park. For those of you that have been out at the Main Sports Complex, you know, we've got a great facility out there. It serves, we have over 2,000 player registrations a year. I think it's one of the largest in the county, certainly largest in the south end of the county. And we provide an excellent sports program, but our facilities, you know, get used a lot. And the upgrading really hasn't been coming at the pace that we really needed it to come. Fortunately, with Rob Williamson, he has been very vocal, very attentive. He had helped us with our project plan. We've met several times. It's been posted on our website since November, so that the whole community could see it. He's actually been present at several of our board meetings, which the public is invited to attend. We have- We have had, especially in November and December, quite a few people were there in attendance to look at the different items we had on the project plan. I'm happy to report that many of those projects are moving forward. Some have already been completed, and the impact up there is already being felt. This playground that he's talking about, we are very excited about. The existing playground that is there is very old. We've had a couple of new pieces just put in recently. But just working up at the fields this past weekend, we had several families up there taking advantage of the existing, you know, playground that we have, and I was excited knowing what's coming and what's going to impact those families and having a lot more families up there. Access to the park is, there's actually, you know, two main entrances, kind of a front entrance and a rear entrance to the park. It's been secured, you know, over the past month due to the construction that's been going up there with the scorer tables. Over the past week, it's been, you know, opened back up for people to have access again now that the scorer tables are complete. So, and the stands have been built, you know, in, on the football field. So we're very excited about the impact this is going to have, you know, on our community. And certainly appreciate all of y'all's support and efforts in that regard. Thank you.
Hey, Darren. The access to the park, moving forward now that the construction is done, I mean, the improvements to the bathroom notwithstanding, that might have to close it up again while materials are being stored there, is there 24-hour access to that park? Would it normally be open?
Yeah, it's very rare circumstance that the gates are actually locked, and that was only through direction by the county from there doing the construction. So other than that, yeah, there's 24 access to the park, 24-hour access.
Okay. And the needs assessment, was that posted online or anywhere else for folks to have access to it?
Yeah, that's on the NYSA Sports website on the homepage.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Williamson, what she wishes?
Certainly entertain any questions from the board. I think that, Andrew, it's good that you came today and brought up some safety concerns. We had exchanged emails back and forth, tried to get response to some of the concerns he had initially. I think he had seen Phase One, and when looking at some possible cost savings, looked at combining both Phase One and Two to do the complete project and saw that it would save almost $10,000 to do it all at one time. The company that's doing the installation, it was their design. Funny thing is, the only request that was made about the slide was, I had requested that one of the slides be removed. So there would only be one slide instead of two, and that there would be climb-up access up and down on the other side. But there will be additional safety signage placed there. This is the company's design. They are certified in one of the largest playground design installation companies there is. And they do all the installation for the park. Yes, there was an existing playground here, but that playground pretty much consisted of some swings, and only one of the swings, I think, is functional at this time, and a small playground unit that you might see behind, in the backyard of somebody's home. And then there was recently a couple of pieces of equipment that were placed in there. But there was really only one passive park in District Four, and an overwhelming concern of the residents was to have more access to parks. So my recommendation would be to move this to Thursday's agenda without objection for the 238-973-33.
One more speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Stacy Wright, 8675 Sand Pine Drive, Navarre. You know, pretty much, I'm on the board of the NYSA, I'm the secretary, and I just wanted to second everything basically Darren said. But I also wanted to thank Commissioner Rob Williamson and thank all of the commissioners for your continued support of the NYSA. I, you know, I came here, I believe, in, may have been December or January, and I expressed my concern for the growth of the park, but not the growth of the facilities. So I just want to commend you on, you know, everything that we've seen done at the park so far. We do have a three-year plan in place. That's been on the NYSA website for a few months now, as Darren stated, for the public to view. And all of the meetings, as Darren stated, are open, and I just wanted to thank you for being actively part of our youth. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Letrick.
Just one observation. J.A. Dawson and Game Time did the playground down at Tiger Point six years ago. That equipment's held up very well, good design. We have a different engineered surface. Instead of the rubber, we have the AstroTurf. But as soon as this gets installed, I have no doubt that it's going to be overrun with screaming laughing kids because that's what happened down at Tiger Point. It's a great improvement.
Thank you. One last comment, brief.
This is Andrew Adams again, 2642 Barefoot Creek Circle. I recognize the NYSA's wanting to improve the park, and I certainly support that. I mean, recreation makes a huge difference. I mean, I'm a fairly fit person, I believe, in fitness. I think that's the, you know, big thing that's, that's we've got to do. But NYSA only addresses a very small percentage of the Navarre population. I have not visited the NYSA website because I don't have young children that play in NYSA. That doesn't mean that I'm not welcome in the park. That doesn't mean anything. It just means that I don't go to the website, and there hasn't been anywhere else that it's been posted that I'm aware of. It has not shown up in the Navarre Press. It has not shown up anywhere else. It has not been on, on anybody else's website, as far as I know. I mean, am I wrong with that? Is there, has it been anywhere else but the website?
No. Back this way.
Has it, has it been, is it anywhere else but the website? I don't believe so. So therefore, I don't think we've involved the entire community. Like, now, the bicycle trail plan is involving the entire community. I applaud that. I, I'm a bicycle rider. I love the thing, thinking, thinking about going and having a bicycle trail plan. But this playground has not been such, has not been vetted that way. So, you know, and JW Dawson is a fine company, but, you know, they're going to, they're, they're making their 20%, you know? They're, they're happy to make their $40,000 from, from San Rosa County. You know, they, if you want to buy it, they'll sell it, no problem. They're not going to give you advice like I'm giving you.
Thank you. We're going to move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number six, discussion of annual contract with Luthen Services of Florida Incorporated for teen court services funded by proceeds from ordnance 2006-20. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number seven, discussion of flood mitigation agreement with owner of property at 3135 Harrison Street for elevation of severe repetitive loss structure funded by FEMA, FMA grant. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number eight, discussion of renewal of the annual leases for office space in the San Rosa Kids' House for Office of State Attorney and Guardian Ed Leitum at current rates. Any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Through the chair and to the county attorney. I'm a member of the San Rosa Kids' House Board and have been for the last few years, so I'd like to recuse myself from this vote, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I understand. Okay. Let the record show that Commissioner J.R. Williamson recuses himself from the vote on Thursday. Hearing no other comments, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number nine, discussion of employment services agreement with Glenn Bailey for the position of Assistant Public Works Director effective March 2nd, 2015. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is that, is that employment agreement in, this will actually be the replacement for Mr. Furman, who will be elevated July 1 to the Public Works Director upon Mr. Whitfield's retirement. And, and they went through the recruitment process, interview process, and Mr. Bailey is, is the recommendation. And he, and he is scheduled to start March the 2nd, and this is essentially the same contract that we had with Mr. Furman for those services. There is the, there was the, the, the kind of, the overlap, if you will, of service simply because he really needs to be brought up to speed to get him caught up in the, in the few months that we've got, Mr. Whitfield left, and, and that's our recommendation.
Any comments by the board? Mr. Whitfield, quit smiling. We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 10, discussion of third annual Autism Odyssey C event at Navarre Beach Park, Saturday, April the 11th, 2015, hosted by the Navarre Beach Marine Science Station. I would move approval without objection. Move it to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 11, discussion of seventh annual Sunset Stampede 5K Run Walk on Navarre Beach, Saturday, May the 2nd, 2015, beginning at 5:30 PM. I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 12, discussion of Pace, Assembly, or God Color Me Extreme 5K Run in neighborhood proximate to the church, Saturday, May 9, 2015, beginning at 8:00 AM. I would move approval without objection. I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 13, discussion of retaining Brantley and Associates Incorporated to appraise property adjacent to Benny Russell Park for potential exchange. Mr. Walker.
The, this matter has been brought, brought to my attention by Commissioner J.R. Williamson. Apparently, there's an initiative by some of the property owners of the property that's immediately adjacent to Benny Russell on the eastern side to exchange that property for property that's adjacent to the park on the northern side. And in order to do that, we'd have to have a, a, an appraisal of the relative values of those properties to make sure that we were acting appropriately.
Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish we had a picture so you could kind of see, but we have our, our property that we own that runs here, and then we have a piece that jets up, almost forming like an L. And there's a parcel that has road frontage on West Spencer Field Road, and then the entrance to the park kind of goes around it. We used to drive through that property at the old entrance, and, and they were allowing us to do that, I guess, through some type of easement, or I don't know how we had it set up. But now we moved it to where the entrance to the park lines up with that four-way stop at North and West Spencer Field Road. What we'd like to do is appraise properties to see what the, what the value would be in trading this piece of property that we do not own for a portion that we do own, and then that would give us the whole, the whole frontage here to a road essentially that would go in. And really, this would help in the future for, right now, we have people that are using the four miles around Spencer Field. It'd be a great place for parking that we could have, and then also a portion butts up to where I'm looking at the all-inclusive portion of Benny Russell Park, so that might be a good place for some handicap parking for people to be able to enter. I, I think it would be beneficial, but we just need to see if it's worth it to us and if it's worth it to them by having it appraised. So I'd like to move forward with this. I think, I think we have a little bit of a piece of property that's probably not as important as what this could be, but it all comes down to how much they're willing to give us. And if you can, who's, basically, the portion right there is the, the piece that we do not own, but that we would like to trade for, for whatever portion. We just need to see what the value is and how much they're going to want to want, want to trade. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I've watched this and listened to all the benefits, and I totally agree with, it'd be a good swap if it works out. Any other comments? We'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 14, information-only public hearing item scheduled for 9:30 AM Thursday, February the 12th, 2015. Hearing notice to consider a recommendation to submit grant application for land and water conservation funds for improvements to Navarre Park. Next, resolution including land and water conservation grant improvements at the Navarre Park in the Capitol Improvement Plan, CIP. Move both of these to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number 15 was an add-on. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We finally got a meeting set up with the trustee through Representative Broxton's office and myself to go down to Orlando on February 26. And both of us have our own ideas of what we'd, you know, like to accomplish there, and we haven't talked about them, but decided it'd be best to just leave that for that particular meeting. I've talked to quite a few citizens and made myself available to them, and also businesses that have indicated that their intention, if the rates get raised to $5, is terminate use of the bridge as much as possible. And I've asked them to submit that to me, if they can give me an approximate estimate of what they're currently spending versus, so they, you know, basically, the Bridge Authority would have some idea of if these people hold true to what they're saying, the possible loss of revenue. Right now, San Rosa County spends approximately $15,000 a year on sunpasses. And I wondered, because I will be gone to the National Association of Counties meeting for our next set of meetings, and then on the 23rd, and then the 26th, of course, I'll be in Orlando, so this is really the last meeting date I have to ask this, and I'd like to let the board have till Thursday to think about it. If there's a will of the board to give me the ability to let the Bridge Authority know that as a support to our citizens and those that feel like the rates should be lowered or some sort of plan come up to make it more logical to use that bridge, if there's a will of this board to allow me to have the ability to leverage that $15,000 at that meeting. I don't know to what degree. And if we're not interested in doing it all, then certainly I'll, I'll let them know that. Just putting that out there so you can have time to think about it or talk about it and see what we'd like to do as a, as a, as a community to support keeping those costs down.
I'm not sure if I understand exactly about leveraging and how that would work, but...
I guess basically, if I have the will of this board to tell them, if they raise the rates to $5 and can't do something better with sunpass, we'll, we'll chop our sunpass usage as much as we possibly can.
Jerry, you wish to speak to this?
I can't speak to that without...
I know.
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. Since you go in there, I have a message for the board, the people that own that bridge. We'll give you 20 cents on the dollar, and let's call it a day. Otherwise, all of this negotiation, all of this arm twist, and all of the threatening that's going on right now, we'll give them 20 cents on the dollar, or they can pick up their bridge and get it off of our property. There is no guarantees in the, in bonds. That's, that's the, that's the one thing, you, you, when you, when you buy a stock, when you buy a bond, or you buy a milk cow, there's no guarantee in it. And one thing that I've been fearful in all of these discussions is obligating us to help a bunch of people who bought those bonds. Okay, I'm sorry. I've lost money in the stock market. I, I imagine everybody up here's lost money one way or the other. You bought a bad car. That's, that's life. It is not the obligation of the citizens or the state of Florida to placate and help this ill-advised bridge, which no one asked for to start out with, which was birthed by Mr. Johnson and the Florida Legislature going from a swamp to a swamp. It was ill-advised. If they want to sell us a bridge at a discount, the, the bridge is not going to make money. All right, we, we might as well, and, and I appreciate the stance that the, that this board has taken and not expose our citizens to getting on that Bridge Authority because it's a mess. You know, I'm, I'm sorry that it's on its way to bankruptcy, but that's where it's going. And, and this little argument over $3.75 or $5 or two, I know for a fact, if, if, if the toll was $2 and they locked it in at $2, the bondholders would probably get their money. I'm not concerned with the bondholders. They... They were the ones that put their money on the table, and I don't think we need to do anything to placate or to insist or to protect. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned how Representative Broxton has put himself forward as a negotiator in all of this. I don't agree with that. If it's a bad deal and it should bankrupt, then it should bankrupt, and whoever's got the money to pick it up should pick it up. But to continue this negotiation, and we do this, and we do that, and we want to help you, that's not our job, and it's not the job of the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County or the state of Florida to bail out a bad decision. Thank you.
Any comments by the board? So, Commissioner Cole? Oh, I'm sorry. I or me?
I don't know how many times I agree with Jerry, but this is one. The...
Two for two.
Two for two. We had, uh, I, I was dragged kicking and screaming onto what we call the Bridge Authority twice. I didn't learn my lesson the first time, but the second time, believe me, I don't go anywhere near the Public Works Building when they're meeting, that it should have been named the Bridge Non-Authority. The group has absolutely no authority to do anything except have somebody bring a cup of coffee in. And it's, it's a waste of time for anybody to serve on that board, and there's some good people have tried to make it work and tried to change things. The, the people that own the bonds, they are not willing to move one inch, not one inch. It's, and I, I agree that we should let it go.
All right. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to calm everybody's nerves. I'm certainly not going down there to negotiate anything that's beneficial to the, to the trustees. My only purpose of going is to support Representative Broxton and, and to let them know that how our citizens feel. But, you know, we're already footing the bill for maintenance on the bridge and not getting repaid for that. That's part of the agreement. Uh, I was the one that went to the Bridge Authority when they raised it to $3.75 and, and asked them, please do not do that, you know, that if you'll lower the rates, you'll build toll booths, if you keep, continue raising them, you'll close toll booths. So I'm not going down there, not asking this board to give me any, any authority to speak any kind of purchase or anything like that. I'm only asking this board, and I'll move it to Thursday without objection, if there's a will of this board to give me leniency to let them know, and I don't even ask for a figure, let them know that we will curtail sunpass usage as much as possible if they raise it to $5.
One more comment, Jerry.
Let me try again. This board should not participate in any way, shape, or form, any conversation or nothing. We should sit to the side, and should it go into bankruptcy, we'll ask our state legislators to, uh, make an offer, a reasonable offer on it. Outside of that, if it folds, unless they go put up cement barricades across the entrance and exit to that bridge, people will still be crossing it. We, as a county, do not need to participate. We are making a drastic error in judgment here. I'm not being personal with you, Bob, I, I, I don't want you to take it that way. But we, as a county, are facilitating this in a way that's going to get us in trouble. It makes it or it doesn't make it. They have a board of directors, the bondholders have people, if they want to put it to $5.75... Matter of fact, you're, we are, let's send them a letter to encourage them to put it to $5.75 an hour, then the bankruptcy will come faster. What we're doing right now is we're just slowly, slowly playing with it and playing with it. We, as a county, I object to we, as a county, being, having any more involvement in this because it's going to cost us in the long run. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What the county is trying to do, in essence, is assist the state with their discussions with the bridge, because the bridge is not going to cease operating. If they, if, as long as they collect $1, they're in the black, because the state is responsible for all expenses associated with collecting that toll and maintaining the bridge. None of that falls on the bonds, the bondholders. The state pays the people who collect the, the tolls, the state pays for the maintenance. That's in the original bond documents. So the state is the one who is really in a, in a bad position, because that, uh, those expenses from the state get tacked on to the debt of the bond, which will get paid on, paid for after the bondholders. So if they get paid off 100 years from now, then the state starts getting paid off. So the state has a real interest in, I would think, the state has an interest in working to, uh, to come to some amicable resolution with regard to the bridge. I, I think the county can have a role in assisting the state wherever we can. Our sole authority with the bridge is to appoint members to that authority, which we have not done lately because of the, uh, the, the fact that they're not paying for director's insurance and things like that out there, so. But I support assisting Representative Broxton in his efforts, because DOT is on the hook regardless of what happens, whether they collect, whether one car drives across that bridge a day or 1,000 cars, DOT is going to pay to collect the toll.
Wallace?
Wallace, Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I would say if DOT and, and the state, um, are going to get hammered, no matter which way you go, send the, the state a message and stay out of it. Let it go to bankruptcy. Don't try to placate, uh, people who are trying to bleed people in Santa Rosa County for $5 both ways on a bridge. Uh, I would support staying out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Here again, the board voted, or not necessarily voted, two or three months ago with Commissioner Cole to go to that meeting with Representative Broxton, so, uh, I don't see any reason for us to back away from that now, go down, have the discussion, kind of see where we're going, and come by and give us an update. I don't think, there's no action on that today, so.
Well, I, I do think we need to make clear that we're not delegating to Commissioner Cole any type of decision-making authority on behalf of the board, because that would be a sunshine issue. It's certainly, um, appropriate for him to engage in a fact-finding and bring any sort of a discussion back to the board, any sort of issues for, for authority, but, um, but not to make him a delegation of speaking for the board.
Did you get that, Commissioner Cole? Okay. All right, information only. Moving forward, number 16 was an add-on as well. Commissioner Rob Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we have here is a request from Juana's Pagodas for a pretty cool special event. It should have a map pulling up of Juana's with an area that you can see that has the diagonal lines across it. It's within the existing footprint of Juana's. Had an opportunity to meet with the tourist development director, Julie Morgan, and Kevin Rundsky and myself. She is in support of this event. Then after that, met with the county attorney to see if this was something that required board action. Based on the agreement, um, this, this is the reason why, the, the agreement that's in place with Juana's, this is the reason why we brought it before the board today, because this would be an event that would charge for access to this area, and so we would be in effect, or Juana's would in effect be restricting access for that one day only. They need to ask for permission for that, similar to other special events that we've had. Now, this will not in any way restrict access to the boat ramp or anything of that nature that's just specifically for Juana's. And Kevin is here to answer any questions that the board may have, but pretty exciting event, have the opportunity to bring in a nationally-known act by the name of Joe Morgan? Joe Nichols? Nichols? Sorry, I had Julie Morgan on the brain, sorry. Joe Morgan is a lesser-known artist. Joe Nichols is, um, more of a well-known country artist, and they're expecting, I don't know, goodness, 1,500 people possibly or more, or... Bottom line, this would be a great boost to our tourism, and they're going to make sure that they have everything tracked, so we can see where parts of the country or parts of the area folks are coming from, and kind of ties into what we want to do from a tourism perspective. So that's the request, one-day exemption to restrict access to the area you see there.
Any discussion by the board?
As to we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection?
Here none, it passes. All right, this time we're going to go into the engineer's report. Mr. Blalock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item is a discussion of a task order with HDR Engineering to provide the engineering services for the development of a landfill gas to compress natural gas processing, storage, and the fast field dispenser facility. This is phase two, as you know, of our gas collection system. We've been, um, pulling data and collecting, uh, samples, and we need now to determine suitability of the gas we've extracted and flared for a beneficial use in the form of compressed natural gas, and would recommend approval.
Any discussion by the board? Move this to Thursday without objection here and none it passes?
Item number two is a discussion of a contract modification, number three, to the task order 25 with CH2M Hill. To increase the budget ceiling over the next five years, I should have switched two and three for the professional services relative to the Navarre Beach Utilities. I'd move that to recommend it for Thursday's meeting.
Discussion by the board? Here and now, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here and none it passes?
Item number three is a discussion of the contract modification, number four, to the standard master agreement for professional services with CH2M Hill to extend that contract five years with the expiration February 24th, 2020.
Discussion by the board? Jerry?
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. Mr. Blalock, of concern to me as a citizen is a certain lack of bidding and, and, boy, this is, this seems to be a long ways out, 2020. In our, our current economic climate, I, you know, I, as a citizen, I'd like to encourage my government to bid everything out, because I think it's a benefit. Uh, we, we saw a few years back where we set aside several engineering firms, so we no longer, they don't have to bid anymore. You guys, or Hunter, y'all can just pick up the phone and, and I, you know, I have, I have some concerns in that. Just, just because two or three people are qualified to do something doesn't necessarily mean we shouldn't continue to, uh, to bid things out, and I, you know, I, I, I saw this on here. We quite confident we want to be in business with somebody to 2020?
We certainly have a number of continuing services, general services agreements within Santa Rosa County for professional services. And Roy can explain it, they're not actually a bid. They go through a qualification-based selection process...
Right.
...which CH2M Hill did do, and they've been our consultants, supporting us in numerous activities in the Navarre Beach Utilities.
Right.
So, I, if I didn't feel confident with this particular firm, I wouldn't be here with that recommendation to the board today.
Right, and, and, and I, and I, and I appreciate you explaining that. However, you don't operate that way at your house. You, you don't say, okay, well, there's six people who can paint houses, and I think they're capable of painting houses, so just whichever one I want to pick. That, that's the problem that I have with this. Because they're qualified to do something, that's great. We should only use qualified people. But, but, but we should bid things out, because I think we lose, we lose a great deal of, uh, we're, we're in the driver's seat here, it's our checkbook. Why wouldn't we bid things out? It only takes a short period of time to bid something out. If we do a good job writing the specs, we, we crack the envelopes and, and, and we pick the best one. I'm just saying, there has been a series of time, this board and some people who aren't on this board now, we have, we have gotten into this mindset of, well, they're qualified, we shouldn't have to force them to do that bidding process. And, and I'm going to tell you, as a citizen, I disagree. That's my money that's being spent there.
The process for engineering services is governed by the Competitive Consultant Negotiation Act, which has been complied with in regard to this, where there is a ranking process that they go through, rank three, and then negotiate with the, the highest ranking. That's what took place in regard to this, that it provides for a continuing contract. Um, it's a statutory process that we have to follow. We did follow.
That is one process you can follow. You can also bid everything out if you want to.
No, that's not correct, not engineering services. As a matter of fact, you have to go through the Competitive Consultant Negotiation Agreement process, and then you get to talk price with the highest ranking. You can, if you don't meet, reach an agreement with them, then you can go to the second. And, and you cannot bid it, as you were talking about, on an individual basis every time. I'm sorry.
Well, I, I just, these, these continuous long-term contracts are a concern of mine. Thank you.
Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here and none it passes?
Item number four is a discussion of the resolution and joint participation agreement between Santa Rosa County and FDOT to construct two entrance-exit taxiways at Peter Prince Airport. If we can project my computer, I'll show you those two. What we're looking at is the approved airport layout plan for Peter Prince Airport. The two entrance and exit taxiways are this one to the east and this one to the west. What you see in green are existing hangars. There's 100 hangars with 15 under construction. Uh, these were entrance-exit taxiways we, we did a number of years ago to support this tier. With the construction of, of additional taxiways, the need for these have moved up in the priority plan. DOT will be funding these at approximately 80/20 match, 80% DOT, 20% county, and our match will come out of the airport revenue funds.
Any discussion by the board? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you haven't had the, just information, if you haven't had the opportunity to go out and see what all's been taking place recently on our airport, the growth that's out there, I'd invite you all to go out. We just recently completed or are very close to completing a complete separate building on the east side at the, uh, where it's marked number two on your map, uh, that's totally for just education purpose and classroom purpose, so, uh, just get a chance to get out that way, stop in, see what all's been going on. Thank you.
Growing Airport. Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection here and none it passes?
Item number five is a discussion of the county maintenance for the Preserve. This is a 299-lot subdivision located in Working District 3. Uh, it has been before the, I'm sorry, Working District 2, correct that. Uh, this has come before the board, uh, several times, uh, in the past, and he, what they're bringing today is, um, a request for, uh, to discuss, uh, current paved road and drainage maintenance issue. That's a small issue, it was included in the backup. And then an issue that came up with road and bridges related to the eradication of some cogengrass within those rights away. Mr. Kenhorn with Kenhorn and Associates is here to address the board, and any questions, of course, Mr. Whitfield will feel free to, to chime in as he sees fit.
Mr. Horn? Name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Blalock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'll be as brief as I can. First of all, and Roger provided a little bit of background, we have been here before you on several occasions relative to this subdivision, but just a quick background. It, uh, originally was conceived back in the 2005, 2006 timeframe. It was designed originally as 151-lot, one-acre subdivision entitled the Preserve. The construction took place, so the original infrastructure construction took place around 2007, 2008 timeframe. It was completed to about 99% just before the real estate market, uh, went through the, the semi-collapse, I would call it. Subsequent to that, in about the 2009 timeframe, it was rezoned, and the property was, when it was rezoned... it was rezoned, it was increased in density to the 299 lots that Mr. Blaylock referred to. As part of the process of increasing that density, we had to go in and cut the streets to allow for installation of new sewer laterals and water surfaces. And there were some other maintenance items that had to take place. Number one, to take care of that last 1%. Number two, just to take care of some items that had occurred over the period that the development was idle. In January of 2014, the new, more dense plat was approved, and during the year 2014, we undertook a project to go back and mill and overlay the streets and to basically make minor repairs necessary to get that subdivision in a condition that would be suitable for Santa Rosa County maintenance. That process was completed in January of 2015. I have visited the site with inspection personnel from Santa Rosa County, and during that process and during their review of our certification and initial request for Santa Rosa County maintenance, there were a couple of items that had came up, and those are the topics for today. First of all, we noted in the review of the subgrade density compaction that when the sewer laterals were compacted, they were inadvertently tested to the standard Proctor density test as opposed to the Santa Rosa County standard, which requires a modified Proctor density test. And I have prepared an argument that was in your package that gives my assessment of that situation and our recommendation as to why we believe that that issue does not in any way affect the long-term integrity or maintenance requirements for the roadways. And I'll be glad to elaborate more or read that into the record if you prefer. I'll pause there to see if you would like me to do that or if I should continue along.
Any requests at this time? Continue on.
Okay. A second issue that we encountered as part of the project closeout inspection is we noted the presence of an invasive grass species down along the, down adjacent to the Anderson-Columbia Storage Yard or their, I think that's a CND site down there on the corner, and also adjacent to the I-110 right-of-way in a couple of places. We noted the presence of an invasive grass species called Cogan grass. And your Public Works Department was very diligent in saying, gentlemen, we'd like you to take care of that before we accept this for maintenance. And so what we have in your package today is two proposals. One is from Brown Construction to, I think they addressed it to me, but it would be funded by Motor Coach at the Preserve, the developer. The first is from them to take care of a small number of minor punch list items that was identified in the final inspection with your Public Works Department. And then secondly is a proposal from Panhandle Growers, a Santa Rosa County business up in the north end of the county that are in the tree farming business. They happen to have experience with Cogan grass management, and so we have also included a proposal from them for an eradication plan to deal with that Cogan grass within the right-of-way, rights-of-way. And what we would like to ask today is if it would be reasonable to go ahead and ask for conditional acceptance of the roads and drainage infrastructure with the understanding that the developer would withhold $11,000 and change in the existing irrevocable letter of credit to ensure funding of those two minor outstanding items. And we would just ask your conditional approval of acceptance of the maintenance of the streets and drainage, subject to completion of those items, with him providing assurance that the funding was there to cover them. That is the request.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things that got me concerned with the Cogan grass is you said you're going to eradicate it on the right-of-ways, but that doesn't, how about the grass that's on the lots? I mean, it's almost a waste of $4,850 to eradicate it on the right-of-ways if we're not going to do anything about the lot, individual lots. And then this quote also says, "without holding pond areas." Do you have, is the Cogan grass also spread to the holding pond areas?
I will address the second question first. Yes, sir, there is some Cogan grass that we have identified in the retention pond areas, and that is included in the limits of the planned eradication.
But this says specifically, "without holding pond area."
Excuse me?
This says specifically, "without holding pond area," on the proposal from Panhandle Growers? In the line, it says, "til roadside areas and proposed areas without holding pond area."
Their proposal does, we gave them a graphic that did depict the limits in the holding pond areas, and that graphic was part of their, I didn't attach it here, but the intent is to include those areas. So you can rest assured that those are included and would be included and not be accepted. Forgive me, I haven't seen that.
Commissioner, it's my understanding that they're just not going to be able to till the slopes of the pond. They're still going to eradicate it, but it's my understanding that the tilling that we talked about, it's just not going to be practical on the slopes of the pond.
All right, can we get some sort of language?
We'll get perfect clarification in that for our final recommendation on Thursday.
All right, and then back to my first question. We're going to spend a lot of money and got, you got a whole lot more lots than you got right-of-ways, so what's going to do, what's going to happen about it just coming back, you know, off the lots?
Commissioner, first of all, that is a very, very astute and valid question. Right now, the directive that we had from Public Works was to address the rights-of-way. And in the limits that we have prescribed for the eradication process, we actually had them go another 10 feet beyond the right-of-way. And the tilling that is proposed, and forgive me, now I understand what that exception was about, thank you, Mr. Blaylock. But the tilling that was proposed, I think I best back up just a second. The eradication plan calls for, the initial effort would be to actually apply a fertilizer, if you can believe it, in the early spring to the areas of Cogan grass within the rights-of-way and 10 feet beyond. That fertilizer promotes a rapid and new growth of the grass, and then approximately a couple of weeks after the fertilizer application, an initial spray will take place. And having that new growth, that helps the, that helps to cause the chemical to be absorbed down into the root system. And then there would be an approximate two-week delay and a second spraying. And then finally, after that second spraying, for the rights-of-way areas and 10 feet beyond, the plan calls for going and tilling the, tilling the rights-of-way and 10 feet beyond to try to dig down into the root structure and at least get it moved back 10 feet beyond the right-of-way such that it would put it in a position to be easily controlled. I do share your concern that over time, if you only get it back 10 feet beyond the rights-of-way, over time, once that chemical agent is exhausted in the soil, there could be the possibility that some of the, you know, some of the grass would begin to creep back. But that would be a, again, we just addressed what we were directed to. I don't know whether, I don't know why we were, why it was suggested that we deal with it in the rights-of-way only, but that was the way the direction came to us.
I think our direction on the rights-of-way was because that was what we are going to have authority over. Commissioner Cole's concern is certainly legitimate because this invasive grass, it spreads very quickly. If it's only removed from the right-of-ways, there is some concern that it may creep back from the private property back into the right-of-way. Now, one way we were looking at this is if the, as the lots develop, people will start maintaining, as they build on these lots, they'll start maintaining these lots, they'll start mowing this grass, they'll start taking care of it themselves, they'll keep it mowed to a point where it won't reach a point of spreading or seeding out. A lot of that depends on how quickly the lots develop. And so, you know, I don't know how much time it buys us to have the Cogan grass eradicated from the right-of-way and 10 foot beyond into the private property. Hopefully, that would buy you a few years if development takes place, the problem would probably take care of itself. But it is a great concern. I mean, this is an invasive grass that, it does spread very quickly. Our concern is going in before the lots develop and we may have to bush hog the right-of-ways, go in and mow the right-of-ways and then carry this grass out on those mower decks and spread it to other areas. That's our biggest concern. We don't want to cause this to be spread in other areas. This grass is a real problem. It's a great concern to the timber industry, which obviously is very big in our area because it's been known to actually, to choke out pine forest, especially young pine forest. And so it is a great concern, but we didn't feel like our authority extended much beyond the right-of-way. We didn't really feel like we were in a position to ask to remove it from the private property as well, but if we have that authority, it may be something we want to consider.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, maybe.
Commissioner Cole?
Take another look at this. How concentrated is it? Is it, we got a pretty thick?
Yes, sir, and to put it in perspective, the eradication limits are about four and a half acres out of the entire, I forget, 300, 400-acre subdivision. If I had a pointer, I could point to you to show you where it is, but if you look at the very southern end of the development and you go up to the second knuckle sack, we'll go north, right there, from there to the south, there is, the rights-of-way are, there's a pretty decent prevalence of the grass in that vicinity. Then there is an additional amount at the intersection of red oak and red maple drives. That is a smaller area, but there is some at that point. All the northern areas are at a high enough gradient that either, I don't know whether this grass doesn't like those higher elevations or if it turns out to be that it has only spread from what is in close proximity to the CND landfill.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're not talking about doing all the right-of-ways in the Preserve. We're only talking about treating what's there?
That is correct, yes, sir. Those areas where we have identified the Cogan grass to be.
Through the chair, Mr. Andrews, how could we, I don't know how to put, how could we piggyback with this and eradicate what's there rather than just basically piecemealing this? Is there a mechanism we have through Public Works to, or through engineering to do anything? Or, it just, to me, seemed, I see where Davis is coming from in mowing it and preventing that. I'd like to, a little more information before I make a decision on, one, how long will this treatment last? I mean, is it going to be good for a couple, two or three years? And hopefully that, what can occur is, Mr. Whitfield explained it, we could have some infill here and people will take care of it. If that's not the case, if this treatment's only good for a year and the remaining grass is going to start immediately coming back into the right-of-ways, how can we perhaps piggyback with this and eradicate it in this section and be done with it rather than spend $5,000 and then in a couple of years, we're right back where we started from? Everybody's looking at me like with a question. Hopefully you understood.
Commissioner Rob Williamson?
No, you're right. I think this would require some, that's what I had in my notes, was ongoing maintenance, depending on how long it would take them for the build-out. Can we put something in there? Davis, would you think that we would, you know, add a pre-emergent application when we get to the fall, but then also maybe we're looking at a certain percentage of the development would be complete before we would take this portion of the restrictions off? In other words, they have to provide ongoing maintenance to keep it 10 feet back from our right-of-way until the subdivision is 50% or 75% complete? Would you think that would help? That's my fear as well, that it would, you know, that chemical's going to wear off and that stuff's bad news.
Well, I would defer to the county attorney, but one thing we might, one option we may look at is just extending our typical warranty period for additional years with a specific requirement that that include that the developer monitor and eradicate the Cogan grass as needed.
Well, I think we really only have jurisdiction over, are only going to have jurisdiction or authority over the rights-of-way. I think that there could be an extension of the warranty for the eradication of the Cogan grass within that, those rights-of-way area. I mean, we have a two-year warranty generally, I think, and if we extended that for some time, that might be an appropriate solution. I think probably the Cogan grass, based on this, is coming from the CND landfill, and we're not going to have any authority over that other than our landfill regulations.
Okay, we need to kind of wrap this up, so, Roger?
Based on what I heard from the board, the developer had already offered one-year additional warranty period. The action that we would take would be approve that concept. I'm not comfortable recommending us accepting maintenance with a 30-day punch list item. However, once that item was complete, I would be, we could come back in four weeks and put all, you know, accept it for maintenance, start there. Two or, well, the two years, the minimum warranty period, they've offered another year on the subgrade, which we're comfortable with, so the three-year warranty period. And action on Thursday would just be approval to accept the reduction in the level, letter of credit excluding those additional punch list items that, I'm sorry, that figure off not by it, was $11,000, Ken?
Yes.
Because to release the letter of credit, they need to release that to pay the contract for the work that's already been completed, and the county controls that letter of credit. So that would be the action we would take on Thursday.
Mr. Kelly? Mr. Cole?
How do we accomplish what this gentleman needs to get going to keep this project moving forward, but keep our door open for the next couple of weeks on, you know, more information on the Cogan grass, how long it's going, the application's going to last and different things like that? Can we do that?
I assume so, if that's the will of the board. We were trying to get to an action for Thursday.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that as long as we can, I think everybody sees where I'm coming from and understands it, just how do we accomplish getting him moving forward and keeping ourselves a little bit more protected or visiting a possibility of eradicating it totally so we can?
Commissioner Litchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to make sure I understand correctly, what we can do Thursday is authorize the reduction in the line of credit that's outstanding there, the security that the county has. We will not be accepting the roads for maintenance this Thursday. We will do that after the punch list is complete in 30 days. So we have 30 days, consult with the county engineer, figure out what you want to do on the warranty, whether it's an additional one year or two years or what have you, incorporate the eradication program for the Cogan grass into the warranty that we require for the roadway itself, and we can come back and do that in 30 days. The action this Thursday will be to authorize the reduction in the irrevocable line of credit.
Once, once the punch list items that are anticipated to be completed by March 6th, I think is what it says in here, once those are completed, right?
No, we'll go ahead and reduce the, authorize the reduction in the irrevocable line of credit. We will not accept the roadway for maintenance until the punch list is complete.
Right, thanks.
You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Lane, say that again, please.
Action moved to Thursday will be to allow the reduction in the irrevocable line of credit to the amount stated previously. We will hold off on any action on accepting the roadway for maintenance until such time as the punch list items are complete. as the punch list items are complete and appropriate warranty is determined.
Moved out to Thursday's agenda without objection. Here none it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Number six, discussion of approval of final plat for Willow Glen Phase 2B, a 32-lot subdivision of a portion of Section 28 Township 2 North, Range 29 West, Santa Rosa County, Florida, District 3, Attachment F. Mr. Blaylock.
It's shown on the screen. It's pretty straightforward. They have completed it and posted appropriate bond, well, they haven't posted a bond, they have completed it because the next item is acceptance of all the improvements. So, we'll record a plat and approve pavement drainage maintenance.
Any discussion by the board? Moved to Thursday's agenda without objection. Here none it passes. Number seven, you can read that one.
Number seven, discussion of approval for the pavement drainage maintenance for the aforementioned Willow Glen Phase 2B, a 32-lot subdivision in Working District 3, including corkscrew court for 400 linear feet and Glenbeak Court, 400 feet.
Moved to Thursday's agenda without objection. Here none it passes.
That concludes the engineer's report.
Moving to Public Services Committee, Commissioner Jared Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items today. The first is discussion of approval of modification to the AT&amp;T agreement for the 911 system and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. There are no additional costs. September 24th, we approved Gulf Breeze Police Department being part of that upgrade. I think this is just something clerical to put them into them. There's no cost to the county, and I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number two, I believe this would just be information only, is discussion of working with the transportation planning staff to provide a list of citizens within their districts that may be interested in participating on the Florida-Alabama Transportation Planning Organization, TPO Citizens Advisory Committee, the CAC. Mr. Gomillion, would you like to discuss, this is just information only for the other commissioners, I guess, to get with Sean Ward, if there's any people within their district that might want to serve on this committee?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, speaking with Don Richards, I know that UPA will have someone that they would, they have a member that's interested in serving on the CAC, so I'll find out exactly who that is and get the information over to Sean.
And I believe what the process will be, we'll just get this over to Sean and go from there. And like I said, we don't have to vote on this on Thursday, so this will just be information only.
And, Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, I've already spoken with Sean, and we have Ralph Agnew that this board already approved, and I've also recommended James Broxton and Jason Kimbrel. So, that kind of rounds out District 4's responsibility as far as appointees to the CAC.
Thank you. Commissioner Williamson, Mr. Gomillion, is it two per district? How does that work as far as the CAC goes?
I'm not sure there's a number. Is there, Sean?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As of right now, there is not no specific number. We certainly have other committees as part of the Transportation Planning Organization that we can appoint individuals to. They, as it currently stands, they have about 22 members that are signed up and registered. However, they, at their meetings, they have five or six people show up. And so, we have a very, very low response and turnout from individuals from Santa Rosa County, so we're just trying to up that and certainly get some more representation on these boards.
Would you say that there's a happy number there that you would suggest for us to move forward or to be thinking about?
Yes, sir. I would certainly look for two or three, you know, individuals that you can recommend that we can contact and put in touch. You know, certainly, if they're not interested in the transportation aspect of it, we also have the Community Traffic Safety Team as well from the community, and that's more focused on the engineering and the law enforcement side of bicycle pedestrian safety and things. So, we could certainly ask that they join that committee as well. So, you know, there are opportunities. We're just trying to look for individuals from the county that we can get to join us.
So, probably the best plan of action from here was if each commissioner could think of two people within their district to serve on CAC, pass that along to you, then that'll come back before the board and be approved? Or will that go to the TPO?
It'll go straight to the TPO, yes, sir, for, it will not come through here. It will follow on through the TPO and through the CAC for a nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Like I said, that's information only, so we will not have to move to Thursday's agenda, but you can be thinking about people and just email that to Sean, and we'll get them in front of the TPO. Item number three, we have discussion of approval of the agreements with Tri-County Community Council, Inc., as the new community transportation coordinator and authorized chairman to sign all related documents. Mr. Gomillion, this is just clerical work from action that we took earlier in the year. Do you have any comments? I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Public Services Committee for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Moving to Public Works, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of reducing the posted speed limits on Central High School Road and Allentown Road in the vicinity of Central High School. Mr. Whitfield, we got any comments on that?
This request was brought to us from the Sheriff's Department. They felt like it was a safety issue with a 55 mile an hour current speed limit on these roads, Central High School being on the west side of the school property and Allentown Road being on the south side. It's 55 on both roadways, and what we're talking about doing is a reduction of, in the area very close to the school, a reduction from, to 35 miles an hour from the current 55, and then as we get a little further away, reducing it to 45 so that you, you know, you'll go from 35 to 45 and then back up to 55 as you get farther away from the school. So, we're in agreement with this. We feel like it's a good plan for safety reasons.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? If not, I'll move that to Thursday's without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item two is discussion of resurfacing the following roads in District 4 at an estimated cost of $125,652. Adora Street from Fort Worth Street to Frontera Street, Avenida de Soul, Southern .6 miles, Fort Worth Street from Frontera Street West, 1,575 feet, Vaikia Drive, Fourth Street to Escola Street, High School Boulevard, the Western 790 feet, and Delusian Court, Ricardo Street, De Lucina's Court, Elegance Court, and Camer, Cameria, well, C-A-M-A-R-I-L-L-A Court. And I do so, move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
Just one point of correction, that's Avenida de Soto instead of Avenida de Soul.
Okay. Thank you.
There, Tom King.
All right. Any other comments, questions? I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
And item number three is discussion of purchase of the following mowers for Parks Department from Smith Tractor Company Incorporated based on comparison shopping. That would be two 72-inch deck diesel mowers at $14,025 each for a total of $28,050, and one 54-inch deck gasoline mower at $6,099. Questions from the board? Not, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that completes Public Works' agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. We'll move now to Budget and Financial Management Committee, Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Chairman Salter. We have, let's see, we have 10 items today. Item number one, discussion of bids received for traffic signalization, maintenance, and repair services. Ingram Signalization Incorporated is the sole bidder and meets specifications. Move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number two, budget amendment 2015-96 in the amount of $10,500 for outdoor movie night events at Santa Rosa Sportsplex, sponsored by the Pace Athletic and Recreation Association, Para, from District 1 and District 3 recreation funds, is approved at the January 22nd, 2015 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jared Williamson.
That number's going to be $10,347.42 is what it's going to end up being. And Commissioner Salter, you are welcome. That saves you $76.79 in your Parks and Rec Fund. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Also, it says the events will be at the Santa Rosa Sportsplex.
We need to, that's Para Football Complex. We changed that last time, and it looks like it went back to what we had before, but that is the Para Football Complex.
Mr. County Administrator, I'm sure that we can have a cleaned-up language by Thursday, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, and let the record show that Commissioner Jared Williamson has come in under budget. I'd like to move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number three, budget amendment 2015-97 in the amount of $51,303 for the installation of intermittent boating restriction signage on Blackwater River is authorized by Florida Fish and Wildlife. From boat registration revenue, is approved at the January 22nd, 2015 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number four, budget amendment 2015-98 in the amount of $12,093 to fund the budget request for technology from the Office of the Public Defender. The technology expenditures have exceeded the projected recording fee revenue, and Florida statute requires that Santa Rosa County fully fund these expenditures. You remember seeing this in your backup a few meetings back. I recommend that we move this to Thursday's meeting without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number five, budget amendment 2015-99 in the amount of $34,150 to transfer funds from the Capital Fund of the Parks Department and the General Fund for two 72-inch deck diesel mowers for, and that's at $28,050, and one 54-inch deck gasoline mower, $6,100. Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number six, 2015, budget amendment 2015-100 in the amount of $14,662 to transfer funds from the District 4 Rec Fund to the Parks Department and the General Fund to purchase benches and trash receptacles for Navarre Sportsplex. Recommend this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number seven, budget amendment 2015-101 in the amount of $8,600 to transfer funds from the District 3 Rec Fund to the Parks Department and the General Fund for a building to cover the concession trailer at the Fidelis Community Center. Request this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number eight, if you will recall, this is the change, budget amendment 2015-102 in the amount of $238,973.33. Mr. Chairman, I looked at the, on the break, and you are correct, it's 973. To transfer funds from the District 4 Rec Fund to the Parks Department and the General Fund to purchase playground equipment, build a pavilion, and two picnic tables for the Navarre Sports Complex. There's going to be a correction there as well. The build a pavilion and two picnic tables for the Navarre Sports Complex. I could do.
I think the number's going to be two, it was, including the other memo, it's $240,923, and we'll have that for them.
The 238, 973, 33 is for the playground equipment, and there's an additional cost for a 12-by-24 pavilion and two picnic tables that will also be part of this overall project. And we did not have the exact pricing. Did we, Mr. Walker?
As Ms. Simmons said, it's $240,923.33.
240, 923, 33, is that correct?
That'd be correct.
Okay.
We only do whole dollars. We'll take care of it.
We will confirm that number on Thursday, but for moving it to Thursday's agenda, budget amendment 2015-102 in the amount of $240,923.33 to transfer funds from the District 4 Rec Fund to the Parks Department and the General Fund to purchase playground equipment, build a pavilion, and two picnic tables for the Navarre Sports Complex. And ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number nine, budget amendment 2015-103 in the amount of $18,000 to carry forward funds for the janitorial services and panhandle alarm in the Court Facilities Department of the Fine and Forfeiture Fund. Ask that these be, this item be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item number 10 is the county expenditure check register. Mr. Chairman, I'm currently reviewing, and I will have ready for you by Thursday for your signature. And that concludes the report. I'd like to move the county expenditure check register, item number 10, to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here none it passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our normal business. I know Mr. Spencer wants to add something under public forum, but Jerry, do you have anything first?
I'll go ahead and knock this out. Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. We're coming up on, in March is Sunshine Week, and I see a couple of things that I think we could do a little bit better. I wanted to tell the board that I appreciate you recognizing the right of the citizens to come forward. I know sometimes it gets a little contentious and a little arm wrestling and things of that nature, but it's an important part. It leads to credibility of this board, and I appreciate that. Chapter 119 and Chapter 286, Chapter 119 is open records, which this board has a requirement to make sure that that is carried out. And Chapter 286 is open meetings, and I think this board does a wonderful job in making sure that all meetings are advertised and handled correctly. I have a quote from our Attorney General in Florida, "Transparency is not up to the whim or the grace of the public officials. Instead, it is an enforceable right." So, they tell you when you're giving a little speech that you always start out with nice, and then you have to get serious, okay? I'm going to tell you that nobody typically remembers when I was nice the first time and the second time. They're only going to remember today's comments. So, I hope you'll remember that I've tried repeatedly, and I've asked repeatedly, and I've encouraged repeatedly that Chapter 119 be followed when citizens like myself or other folks make those requests. I will tell you today that I'm in no mood to listen to any excuses that I overlooked, I forgot, or the dog ate my homework. I've heard all of those before. The five of you have two employees that work directly for you. That's the county attorney, and that's the county administrator, both of whom have a request from me. One was made in November, one was made in January the 22nd, which there's been no response. And let me define, so that we're all clear on this, to the board members, on a Chapter 119 request, it's not required to be in writing, it can be a verbal request, and according to the state attorney in District 1, it should be responded to within 10 business days. Now, when I say responded to, I'm not saying that the respondent has to give me the information I asked, but they need to respond. And I got your response, I'm working on it, I got your request, I'm working on it, all of that's fine, but it's required that a response is made. We have been somewhat less diligent than we should have been, and that's why my comments are to the five of you. The five of you have the legal requirement to make sure your employees follow Chapter 119. So, I'm, with a smile on my face, I'm asking that the five of you clearly define it to your employees, that they have an obligation under the law, and that they should follow that, because it is soon going to be escalated to a point that I don't want to go to, but I'm not going to have any other choice. Records request, this county is bound by law, and I forgot, and all these other things, I'm tired of that. We have 67 counties in this state, and as a representative of the First Amendment Foundation, I've heard them all, okay? There is no excuse. When a request is made, it needs to be handled, period, end of story. I would appreciate it if the five of you have a conversation with your two employees so that I don't have to come give this speech again. It is growing very tiresome of me. Let's embrace the spirit of the sunshine law. Let's embrace it because it helps us to have better counties and better interactions and all those kind of things. I'd simply ask that we follow it because it's a good law, it's good for everybody. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else from the public before I turn it over to Mr. Spencer? Donnie, you have something for us?
Thanks, Commissioner. Can we bring up the last slide we had up there on the Preserve subdivision? So the public can also see this? So the public can also see this? I put on each one of the commissioners' desk a picture of this, and we just happened to be talking about this subject, on the subdivision, but that's not what I put on, on your desk. To the left of the Preserve is 191 acres. That land was put on the list of lands for three years. And as of today, I signed an estriagement deed, and the county now owns that 191 acres because there was no bids on it for the taxes, and by the statute, the county, after three years, takes that land through an estriagement deed. So there's about 20 acres of wetlands in there, and the rest is agriculture. And I wanted the commission to know, that's just south of, South Airport Road, but we now own that land to the left of that subdivision.
How many acres?
191.
And we own it?
We own it. I signed the deed today. And also wanted, any questions on that?
That property was purchased as part of the Preserve property. I was somewhat involved in that transaction. There is, there was a jurisdictional determination that made the determination that, that it was wetlands and most, that's why the, that irregular border on the bottom of the Preserve property was that they, they kept out of the wetlands when they did the subdivision plan. There, there is some value there, certainly something for mitigation if for nothing else, but it was, I think that's the reason that it wasn't maintained or wasn't paid for by the, the landowner, is that it had very, very limited value. But it's certainly something that the county should consider as far, if nothing else, for a contribution to Northwest Florida Water Management District for preservation of those wetland areas.
Can we put a courthouse on it?
I think you'd have to, have to, you'd have to elevate it quite a bit, I think.
Anything else, Donnie?
One, another thing I wanted to mention with the, the board looking at downtown for the courthouse, that when HOK does their study, if they would include, since they want it to butt up to the existing courthouse, where are they gonna move us and how much that expense is gonna be, because the county's gonna have to incur that expense too, to move us out of there? And I don't know if they'll even have to move the court system out, if they're building right behind that, but that's something that needs to be considered when they come with their figures.
And I would hope that once HOK gets back engaged, that they'll certainly have that conversation with you and anybody else who uses that facility.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
I think on this piece of property, it'd be nice to give it to them, but I think we ought to look at the possibility of putting it on the market, or at least the usable portion on the market. Keep it on the tax basis.
I'd like to have some time to discuss it with staff and see what, I mean, I don't know anything about it right now, so, but, good idea. Anything else? Anybody from the public? We are adjourned.